Meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Issaquah City Council Study Session for Tuesday, February 25th, 2020. All of our City Council members are present and accounted for. We have three lengthy agenda items tonight, and so I'm going to try really hard to endeavor to keep us on time. But it is your meeting, so we'll do time checks from time to time. Our three items are ID 0615, Old Town Traffic Calming. The second item is ID 0467, Old Town Land Use Code Amendments. And then following that item, I think we'll take a short break. And then we have an extensive item, ID 0559, Old Town Subarea Architectural Standards. We will take public comment during the consideration of each item. So we're going to get started tonight. Matt Ellis is a senior engineer who's going to start us off with Old Town Traffic Calming. So go ahead, Matt.
Good evening, Council members. Thank you for having me. Again, Matt Ellis with Public Works Engineering, and we're talking about Old Town Traffic Calming. The purpose of the meeting is to present recommended pedestrian safety improvements to the Old Town neighborhood. Tonight, we're going to summarize direction requested from council, provide a brief history that led us to this point in time, and summarize traffic studies performed, summarize our community engagement to this date, describe our proposal, and that's broken down into immediate improvements, ongoing efforts, and long-term plans. Outline our options, and describe our financial impacts, and provide staff recommendation and anticipated timing. So there's two things for council to consider, whether to proceed with various capital improvements in the Old Town neighborhood. This will require staff to return to council with a proposal to allocate funds from the School Zone Safety Fund to pay for various items. Also, to receive direction to develop a five-year sidewalk improvement plan for the Old Town neighborhood, to improve sidewalks and intersections, connect gaps, and create trail connections within the Old Town neighborhood and along East Sunset Way and Second Avenue Southeast. This is in conjunction with the adopted Old Town Subarea Plan and addendum to the comprehensive plan. So a little bit of background, Old Town Traffic Calming has a history. Back in the 1990s, intersection and sidewalk improvements occurred along Second Avenue from Sunset all the way down to the high school. In 2004, the no-left-turn signs were installed along Sunset and Second Avenue. And in 2017, the Issaquah High School and Middle School redeveloped and joined campuses. Roughly around this time, and until the present, the city received traffic complaints from Old Town community as well as residents on Second Avenue. In 2018, council authorized $100,000 for traffic calming study and permanent improvements, which led to the speed humps within Old Town, one traffic circle, and the removal of the no-left-turn signs along Sunset. In 2019, the city received feedback from the community, evaluated congestion at high school and middle school, performed traffic study in the Old Town neighborhood, and developed proposed improvements. And on February 12th, we held a community meeting to help refine our design. This portion of the presentation, where I'm going to summarize the recent and historical traffic studies in the area, provide staff observations of congestion prior to the start of school, summarize community engagement, and provide a summary of issues that we see today. So this map here is a map of traffic volumes along southbound Second Avenue as well as Bush and Andrews. And it looks at the highest volumes of traffic that pass along the roadway and helps us identify impacts from community traffic and the school. We've observed that there is some traffic that is cutting through the neighborhoods, but not a lot. As you can see, there's a lot more traffic on Second Avenue. In our most recent study in 2019, the average daily traffic on Second Avenue is just over 9,000 vehicles, and that's in both directions. Comparatively, the average daily traffic on Andrews is about 300 vehicles, combination of both west and eastbound traffic. And Bush Street is about 600 vehicles. Second Avenue receives about 10 times the amount of traffic as all of Old Town.
Councilmember Walsh?
For the previous slide, when was that data collected?
October 2019.
Okay, so it was during school days, I assume that was on a weekday?
That is correct. I took out the weekend data. So it's usually a two-week period that we take, and we usually do Tuesday through Thursday to get consistent numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. This compares historical data for Bush Street traffic volumes or speeds versus the speed limit. And this is the 85th percentile, which is the national standard for evaluating compared to the speeds. The first three columns were before the speed humps were installed, and the speeds along Bush Street were about 30 miles per hour. And after the speed humps were installed, they're down below the speed limit of 25. I did not include Andrews, but Andrews has similar data. But if you notice, the speeds are starting to creep up a little bit in the last study in 2019. However, they are still below the speed limit, and the speed humps are effective. So this is an observation performed prior to the start of school. This is the AM congestion, bumper-to-bumper traffic along Second Avenue and Sunset. The red line shows the bumper-to-bumper traffic, and then the orange line shows congestion due to the high school signal. What we noticed is that Evans Street is a source of congestion, and so far, we've been doing a lot of work to try and figure out a way to relieve that congestion and get cars moving a little bit better through there. We're also evaluating pedestrian movements because there is a lot of kids who cross at this intersection. So so far, our work has been to try and improve things at this part of town and see if that'll help people in Old Town. And then along Sunset, our goal is to remove this red line, and that would hopefully reduce the amount of cut-through traffic in the neighborhood. Our theory is that if we reduce the congestion, people won't want to take the time to wander through Old Town and would rather take second in Sunset. So that's currently our goal. That leads us to our February 12th meeting with the community. We heard a variety of concerns from the community, including speeding, cut-through traffic, pedestrian safety, school traffic congestion. People wanted the school zones to be extended. They were concerned about narrow sidewalks, also sidewalk gaps. And in general, the intersection of Second Avenue and Bush Street felt unsafe. So we kind of boiled this down into five key issues that we saw, which was traffic speeds and volumes, pedestrian visibility, school signage, school congestion, and pedestrian experience. And we found that the key underlying issue for all these is pedestrian safety. So within the Old Town, we want to focus our efforts on pedestrian improvements to improve safety, visibility, accessibility, and mobility within and around the neighborhood. So that leads to our proposal. We are proposing three steps. The immediate improvements are items we can construct or implement this year. The ongoing efforts are activities we are actively working on and will continue to do so. And the long-term plans are projects we would like to implement within a five-year period. The next few slides describes these in more detail. So this is immediate improvements, and this is a picture of Second and Bush prior to the start of school. So this is what we're trying to fix. So when we started laying out our improvements, we had five goals that we wanted to keep in our minds. That would be to be measurably effective, meaning we can evaluate how the improvements are working. They need to be cost-effective. They need to be affordable and attainable improvements that are within our available budget. They need to be low maintenance. We don't want an improvement that needs constant service or moving parts that can easily be maintained and fits within our current street standards. It cannot rely on enforcement to be effective. We do not want an improvement that requires law enforcement to constantly monitor. And the benefits have to outweigh the disadvantages. We don't want an improvement that benefits one property owner but negatively impacts their neighbors. So this is just a list of things that we heard from residents and things that we considered.
Councilmember Goodman?
Absolutely.
Can you go back one slide?
Yes.
So you say one of the goals, the fourth one, does not rely on enforcement.
Yes.
So that... I'm not sure what it means by "does not rely on enforcement" because there's a whole range of, you know, there's one thing to not do any enforcement at all, and it's another thing to have constant enforcement.
Yes.
I'm imagining that we're looking at somewhere in the middle, and so I was just wondering, or somewhere along that spectrum, if you could just explain that a little more?
The main thing was things like the regulatory turning restriction signs. We didn't want something that is very effective when the police officers are there, and then the next day, an officer isn't at the intersection, and then people come on through the intersection. So we want something that will work on its own without relying on a police officer to be present to be measurably effective. And we've noticed this, we've placed signs in other parts of town, including Evans and Darst. And it works when an officer is there, doesn't work very well when they're gone, so.
Well, it just seems like unless you're talking about something, some sort of physical prohibition on doing something, then that would apply to almost every type of improvement that we would make or change that we would make out there. And we can keep going, but that's the case with speed signs, you know, speed limits, that's the case with the speed humps, people can speed in between them. And so I'm a little bit concerned that we're talking about, really, we're talking about no enforcement, because everything you've mentioned so far is something that as soon as an officer leaves the scene, people can violate. But anyway, we can keep going, those are just my concerns.
Right.
Members of the council, Chief Erbom is here. I think at an appropriate point, I'd like to have him come up and talk more broadly about enforcement. Most of this presentation is signage improvements, physical improvements, lighting improvements, so if we could get through that, and then we can have Chief Erbom speak to the enforcement.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks. So again, these are things that we considered. I'm not going to go through this entire list, but if we want to discuss some of these things that we did not consider, we can do so at the end of the presentation. But primarily, like Mr. Bob Quitz was saying, is that we're looking at street lighting, crosswalk striping, speed signs, and school zone signage, as well as improvements to the intersection of Second Avenue and Bush Street. So here's kind of a list of just the general things we're looking at in the intersection or in the neighborhood. We're looking at crosswalk striping along Sunset, street lighting at key intersections entering the neighborhood, speed signs throughout the neighborhood to help identify what the speed limit is and remind people to slow down. We're looking at extending the school zone with additional crosswalk signage, and we're looking at improvements at Second Avenue and Bush. Relating to the school route crossing evaluation, we're looking at extending the school zone, not where the speed limit is 20 miles per hour, just adding additional signage at the orange dots, which is major intersections where kids cross. The enforced zone is 300 feet around the school property, and this is set by Washington State Code, so we are not proposing to extend this, which is this area right here. But we will be evaluating new signage beyond that location at key crossings. At Second Avenue, we did hear a variety of options and considered a lot of these. Again, I won't go into detail about all the things that we considered, but we can talk about them later if need be. But we are evaluating a raised crosswalk or intersection at this intersection, which will help reduce speeds along Second Avenue and allow pedestrians to be a little more visible. We're looking at street lighting. We're considering bulbouts or wide sidewalks, which would help kids be a little more, or pedestrians be a little more visible, but we're evaluating that with the school bus traffic, just because buses are wide. We're also evaluating a rapid flashing beacon. Again, this is something we need to discuss with the residents to make sure we don't impact anyone negatively. And we're also looking at additional signage crossings and pedestrian flags at this intersection. So here's a rendering, kind of what we're looking at, at least one option, and that includes street lights. There's currently two street lights on the other side, but we're looking at additional street lighting, a raised crosswalk, bulbouts, and wide sidewalks. Do not block the intersection cross markings, new ADA curb ramps at all locations, and pedestrian flags. And then also, we're going to evaluate the school zone crosswalk signage. So this goes to our ongoing efforts in the area? Yeah, sorry about that.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. So is this, then, that the whole intersection is proposed to be raised, or just the one crosswalk on one leg of the intersection?
Good question. We're evaluating. I did have a conversation with the school district last week to discuss that, and we're just trying to evaluate bus turning movements and make sure that we're not going to create a negative impact by raising the intersection or one crossing. So we haven't figured that out yet.
Okay, is there... What's the practical, I guess, impact on the buses as well as on the pedestrians for the two options?
Very good question. So buses, can everybody see my mouse? So buses typically go along Bush Street and then head down towards the high school, and then when they come back, they do the same thing. They also go straight down Second Avenue. None go into the Old Town east of Second Avenue. So if we did one raised crosswalk or two, we would highlight the crosswalks where we want pedestrians to cross. There's less conflicts with those buses, whereas the whole intersection, we just highlight that entire intersection. So we're just trying to evaluate what would be the better option at this point. So it's not, we haven't determined which one's best. So this goes into our ongoing efforts. We are working on signal improvements at the high school, and we're collaborating with the school district on a lot of various efforts. We're doing signal modifications. We were out there this week.
Sorry, Councilmember Walsh?
Yeah, can you talk a little bit more about the signal improvements that you're looking at the high school?
Yeah.
And the school's involvement in that?
Yes. So yesterday, we were out there, and we were changing some of the timing at the signal to, what we're really trying to do is prevent northbound traffic from cruising up Second Avenue and provide more gaps for pedestrians to cross. And we're also trying to provide more opportunities for buses to turn left onto Evans and into the school campuses. So we're just trying to do a lot of just minor tweaks to see if we can improve flow and provide more opportunities for pedestrians.
So you said the goal of trying to get the buses to be able to turn on Evans. Do you feel like that is one of the major reasons why you've got that backup of bumper-to-bumper traffic?
Yes, that and kids crossing the street.
Okay, so is there any consideration for a light at that location to let the buses cross?
That's a difficult one. We haven't considered that at this point.
Okay, so all of the improvements are looking to slow the traffic that's coming northbound by changing that, the light that's at the school intersection, which would allow more buses to cross?
It just provides more of a gap because we're getting a lot of cars coming through town on their way to work or wherever. So we're just getting a constant stream of either cars heading northbound through town or parents dropping their kids off. And with those two things, we're just not getting enough gaps for buses or other cars to turn left, which is then creating the backup.
Okay, so from my concern there is I don't know what that change is at that intersection and the light timing, but I can understand you'd be able to keep people from going north on that street, but that does allow people to exit out of the school and turn right?
We did install a no right on red at that location.
Okay.
Currently, that is one of the regulatory signs that is working. So we're evaluating that right now.
Okay.
And again, this is just a brand-new change, so we're still evaluating. We'll be out there on Friday to see how things are working again.
Okay, this is one of my major concern areas, is understanding how we can change things that downstream point to help keep people... Because I thought your commentary about if there isn't a backup there, you're not going to see as much traffic going through the neighborhood.
Yes.
And so the more improvements that we can make downstream, the better, not only the pedestrian safety, but the lifestyle of people that are living in that neighborhood.
Absolutely, that's our goal.
Okay.
And we're also, that's a good comment, because one thing we did notice is that a lot of the school commuters are either single occupants, kids, or parents dropping students off. And staff are currently advocating the school pool program, which is a partnership between the city, school district, PTSAs, and students to provide educational campaigns and programs to encourage ride sharing and alternative modes of travel. So that's one of the other things that we're doing in this area to help reduce volumes in the area of traffic.
Councilmember Walsh?
I've got kids in the school district, so I've seen those very minimal emails. I'd like to hear more from the school district directly to us about how they are stepping up the game on that, because I feel like what they've done so far hasn't moved the needles on either student carpool or parents carpooling or bus usage. And so I would be interested to hear what's the next step there?
Yep.
And let me chime in on that. The superintendent and I have talked about that, I think, more broadly, not only here but in other school locations around Issaquah. And it's going to be an ongoing dialogue. I think that the discussion that was had at the end of last year regarding the Providence Point School really helped illuminate the importance of some of these other programs that the district has perhaps not focused on as much as they would like to now going forward in the future. So I think that's going to be an ongoing dialogue, and I know as the council meets with members of the school board, I suspect that that will be an ongoing issue that'll be discussed.
Okay.
That leads us finally to long-term plans. So this is Andrews. If you notice, on one side of the street, we have sidewalk, curb and gutter, and a pliner strip, and on the other side, we have gravel parking. And one thing we want to do is develop a sidewalk improvement plan. We've noticed that Old Town is one of the most walkable neighborhoods in the city. However, it contains some of the largest sidewalk gaps. Developing a sidewalk improvement plan will help meet goals of the adopted Old Town Subarea Plan. It will allow staff to proactively address pedestrian accessibility issues within a section of town. As part of this plan, we'll need to develop street cross-sections for ultimate look of the neighborhood. This will allow us to answer questions of addressing street parking, curb and gutter, sidewalk width, and how we will handle stormwater. This will aid staff in providing direction for developments within the neighborhood as well as prioritizing pedestrian improvements. And this would lead to a five-year improvement plan to address high priority issues. We will develop costs and evaluate their priority level in relation to others' needs on the next CIP cycle. And we are recommending that this not affect our current funding for sidewalk maintenance within the CIP, which repairs tripping hazards and damaged sidewalks throughout the city.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. You said it wouldn't use the current CIP funding, which is already allocated to improve tripping or reduce tripping. So where are we proposing budget coming from?
We would have to evaluate that. We'll talk about that under the finance, but yeah, that would be evaluated in the next CIP cycle, so.
So we wouldn't be considering this until 2025?
No, in 2021, we would, we'll get to the financial part where we get a little more detail.
Okay.
So again, this would help us address and consolidate resident complaints and prioritize pedestrian-oriented issues. Our goal is to incorporate smaller pedestrian-oriented projects into the CIP and construct projects in a five-year timeframe. And this would be part of our Old Town Subarea Plan. So option one is to allocate funds for the Old Town neighborhood improvements. And option two is to create a sidewalk improvement plan for the Old Town neighborhood. And option three would be to do nothing. Option one and two may be implemented together or separately. So finance. Option one includes street illumination at major intersections, street signage and striping, and improvements to the Second and Bush intersection. And we currently have $800,000 of available budget in the School Zone Safety Fund, which are revenues from the school speed camera. And our recommendations would cost approximately $470,000. And option two, we would develop yearly costs for improvements in the next cycle, but we would require 2021 budget allocation for development of street concepts and sidewalk evaluation. So basically, we would just develop the plan in 2021 and then see how we can incorporate that into the CIP.
Councilmember Walsh?
So I noticed in the CIP project number TR001, Second Avenue Southeast has 278,441,000 budgeted in 2021. Would that be for, would that go toward this project, or is that something separate?
That's currently separate, that's south of the high school down to the signal. And we're looking at getting grant funding for that one as well.
Okay, so we don't have anything currently in the CIP related to this, but you're proposing utilizing the School Zone Safety Fund. Do we know what else was going to use that budget and what this would offset?
Currently, nothing. This was a fund that was, as far as I'm aware, not utilized, because it was, we were unaware of what we could use it for, but the improvements in Old Town seem like it would work.
It's unallocated fund balance.
Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. Slightly different version of that question, but what is the scope of what this street school zone safety fund can be used for?
We're still looking into that.
Can it be used for sidewalk improvements?
I think it can in certain locations. It may not be the total extent of the Old Town neighborhood, but I believe in portions that are on sidewalks of school, it could be.
Okay, I think that for future conversation, it would be good to know what the scope of this money, because as currently, we have a sizable unallocated portion, and I also believe that this is continuing to generate revenue, so it would be good to know what we can use this for.
Any other questions?
One more. So our recommendation is to allocate funds for the School Zone Safety Fund and to proceed with the sidewalk improvement plan. And just quickly, our timeline. For option one, if we want to develop in 2020, the work needs to be done in the summer to avoid school impacts, so we would need to move rather quickly and design and construct before September 2020. Option one can be delayed a year, but needs to occur during the summertime. And then option two, we could begin development of the street concepts and sidewalk prioritization to be completed in 2021, and construction would occur in following years. And then so the direction needed is whether to return to council for the various improvements in Old Town and receive direction to develop a five-year sidewalk improvement plan.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Mark?
Seems like an unusually long amount of time to respond to this. Doesn't seem like, it doesn't, I feel like in previous years, when we've identified safety improvements we wanted to make, it hasn't taken two years to actually do anything. Why so long before we could actually start making improvements?
Why don't you let me try and take a take? So the $470,000 is primarily the intersection improvements. The other improvements we can begin right now, and there are different procurement processes... processes. We, we have to wait for the temperature to get to a certain level to paint crosswalk signs. So there's, there's component parts to several of these things. We will move forward as quickly as we can with that. The 470 is by and large the, the intersection improvement. So, so that is what we will likely, that will be a CIP project. We'll have to put together plans and specs for and go out to bid. But the rest, we'll do as quickly as we can based on weather and other factors. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from council? I, I had one. Could you talk a little bit more about the lighting that you're proposing for Sunset? Let's see, I think it's on the corners of Third, Fourth, and Fifth, or was it Fourth? Yeah. Yes. What is the nature of that lighting and how will that impact? I know that that street is becoming more and more commercial, but there are still apartments there and single-family homes. And lighting can be helpful, and then it can be very disruptive to neighborhoods as well. So could you talk about what kind of lighting you're thinking about and how that might affect the neighborhoods there?
Absolutely. Yeah, we're, we're looking at a typical luminaire that would shine pretty much straight down to illuminate the crosswalk. And we have ones in Old Town that we would, we would kind of use as a model. They're kind of the ones with the red posts. I think there's one outside of here. Typically, in Old Town, what we've done so far is just install them on power poles. That's the, the easier way to go. But these locations don't have power poles, and it would be nice to have a permanent look to them. So we would be putting in the ones that meet our standards, and they're usually about 15 feet high.
And have you had any feedback from the neighborhood about the, about the proposed lighting, or?
Not specifically about the, the lighting itself.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any further questions? All right. We'll take public comment at this time. And just a reminder that we're following all of the usual procedures with public comment. Three to five minutes per comment. Is there anyone who wants to address the council on this topic? I am not seeing anyone. Oh, oh, all right. Hold your hands up high. Okay. Please go ahead. Oh, please go up to the, we need to record you. Yes.
The questions that I have are based on the community meeting that we had before. It was brought up by someone that the extruded sidewalks on Sixth-
Ma'am, this isn't a question and answer.
It's not.
I don't believe.
Okay. Can I present the question to be answered later?
If you'd like to, if you'd like to just maybe make your comments, and if the council would like us to follow up, we can either after the meeting, or if there's something you'd like to-
I think it would be beneficial to find out
Yes.
why the extruded sidewalks that were once placed on, at the intersection of Second and Bush 20 years ago, that someone brought up at the community meeting, why they were taken out before, before heading into a new project that, that suggests doing something that was there before. I was not involved in that timeframe, but I think that's an important thing to follow up on. And then I have some other questions. If you go back to your data of the Bush Street traffic speeds, because if I take a look at it, I feel like there's some things that were missing. And that would be a good place to start, because if we look at April, November, and January before the speed bumps were installed, when we first came here this year to take a look at this information, we did say that the speed bumps seemed to be working, and then they were not. So it does match with, with a little bit of the data up there. But if we look at November, or April, November, and January, I feel like we're comparing apples and oranges here. The data is not comparing like to like, because after the speed bumps, we should be looking at April, November, and January again for traffic patterns, because if we take a look at April, what happens in April? We have spring break. And just like other families who travel during spring break, sometimes it's extended. So the week before spring break is skewed, the week after spring break, and so on with February and mid-winter break, November, Thanksgiving. I'm not sure that that's accurate data to base decisions on. And that's what I'm hearing, that a lot of the decisions moving forward of what's working, what's not working is based on, is the data. And what I have stated before is that our experiences are outside the data. It lies in the near misses that are not reported to the police. It relies in accidents that were no injury or accidents that weren't reported, and the data is skewed. So if that's what we're basing our decisions on, I think we've got a pretty big flaw. So if I take a look at that, I, I've also been told that we're not doing the turn restrictions. We needed help yesterday. We need the turn restrictions back in, and we need officers at, at a minimum at the corner of Bush and Second during elementary crossings in the mornings and the afternoons. If those things aren't happening on a regular basis, we're not getting improvements until summer. We've got the rest of the school year that we're waiting out with near misses. With that, we do have hand counts from, from our residents that show in 2017, before the speed bumps were in, when we first initially asked for help, that show counts around 40, 40 to 50 cars that were turning illegally during those times. And we've, we eclipse that now. The signs were taken down. Those were our only boundaries. And people were following those signs, maybe not 100% all the time, but they were following those signs, because now, after the signs are taken down, we have hand counts of eclipsing that within 10 minutes. And our hand counts from before the speed bumps were put in, those numbers were over an hour and a half to reach 45 cars, and we do that in 10 minutes now. And so we've got a problem, and we need help now. We need the signs reinstated at a minimum. We need police presence at a minimum until the details are worked out of the bigger improvement plans, because we are in danger.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wants to comment? There you go. And my apologies, but please give your name and where you live, please. Thanks.
My name's Victoria Monroe. I live exactly on the corner of Second and Bush at 225 Southeast Bush Street. I witness near miss accidents from my front porch daily and while I take my kids to school. I'm mostly here because I have heard from other people that the council might be worried about neighborhood impacts, and maybe the people who live there don't want lights. Like, maybe I want people to crash into my front porch instead of the press lights. I don't, give me the lights. I hate the turtles outside my house. My entire house vibrates every time something like bigger than a normal pickup truck drives over them. My entire house shakes like an earthquake. I hate the turtles. Most of them are broken, and they have ended up in my front garden. I want the light. I really want the press light. All my neighbors right there do. It would not impact me negatively. It would impact me positively. And that's about it. Also, there's way more than 10 cars in the queue on Bush Street. I could take a photo for you every morning at 7:45 while I'm in my bathrobe. It extends all the way down to Fifth Street. And I agree with Heather, who stated that the data doesn't compare apples to apples. It doesn't seem right to me. I know Matt has emailed with my husband about problems with the traffic studies that were done before. It just doesn't seem like it's measuring the same data. But yes, lights.
All right. Anyone else? Oh, Jenny.
I live at 375 Southeast Andrews Street. And I guess my question is, and no, I don't expect you to answer it, but if the no left-hand turns work on Second Avenue for Darst and Evans to keep the traffic from backing up, the traffic is really backed up all the way up to the Highlands on Sunset Way, because people are turning left on Sixth, Fifth, and Fourth. They put their signal on, they have to wait for an incoming car. They've got seven or eight cars behind them, and this is three streets, Sixth, Fifth, and Fourth. And so now you just want to put lights up so that it's easier for them to see and turn, so they don't hit somebody on Sixth Avenue, like happened last fall. It's ludicrous. Why I suggested, why don't you cut off Sixth and Fourth, period? Cut them off. No left-hand turn, no turn out, no turn in. We have one, Fifth Avenue. It has a roundabout on it. So everybody, and then put a no left-hand turn lane on Fifth Avenue, period. If they turn on Fifth Avenue, they have a roundabout. They have a speed bump between Sunset Way and Andrews, then they have the roundabout. Then they've got another speed bump from Andrews to Bush. One way in, one way out, no left-hand turn lanes. I just question why. We've had to beat this and beat this for 20 years, 20 years. And I did, the two women that spoke, your counts aren't correct. I sit every single day, and I have a bump, hump, whatever you want to call it, right. And I didn't mind at first, because I thought, well, maybe it'll, maybe it'll help stop some of this traffic. No. I have the shaking too, because it's right outside my door. It's right outside my bedroom window. Hump, bump, bump, and it shakes the house. Shakes the houses. Sometimes, if it's large trucks, it does something electricity. I'm not sure what it is, but maybe because it's close to a power pole? I don't know. Yes, you really need to check out that, at Second and Bush, when you're doing the pop-out for the people to stop them. When they first put the little pop-outs, or whatever you call them, on the sidewalks there, they had to cut them back, because they did, never did take two school buses side by side. It isn't that they'll crash into each other. Remember, they have long mirrors, and that's the problem. I used to work at transportation for the school district. So, but again, your dad is not correct. I watch the cars. I've sat there with these same, not with these women, and done the same thing. And we've beat and beat and beat for 20 years about missing sidewalks. There's a missing sidewalk right across the street from me. For about 100 yards, there's no sidewalk, and then all of a sudden, there's Fourth Avenue off of Sunset Way. After they hit the speed bump, they come up to Fourth, they don't stop. There's a missing sidewalk there. There's a gal named Amy who rides a electric wheelchair. She has to go out in the road. Guess what? She's almost been hit, and she will not come down Andrews anymore. Sad, because she liked to go to the end of the trail. Anyway, your dad is not correct. We still got problems. Think about our safety. Think about the quaint neighborhood we all love, and we don't even want to get out and walk and roll. So please, do the right data.
Thank you. Anyone else? David?
David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. The curbs at Second and Bush were, prevented the, the school buses from making the turns, so they were a front-page story of the Issaquah Press before Stacy was there, about having to tear out the, the new curbs, because the buses couldn't make the turns. We're, we're incre, we, we are encouraging the chauffeuring of, of students to our middle schools. If you go up and watch the end of the school day at Issaquah Middle School, the parents that are all there are clear, and within 10 minutes, they're all gone. They get out of there before the high school kids leave their building. The kids that are in those buses don't, the last bus is a half hour after the middle school final bell. So those kids and those drivers and those buses idling are out there for a half an hour before they get onto Second. And by the time they get on Second, they got all the high school kids and the rest of it. It's later in the day, another half hour at that time of day makes a difference, and so they're all on doing that. We're doing the same thing at the new Talis Middle School, where we're going to facilitate the chauffeurs and make it harder for the buses. Streetlights, the nice cute ones we have at Front Street and, and all are fine, but they light up everything. We want, we want hooded, lighting the side, the, where the people are waiting for a crosswalk in the crosswalk. We don't need the cast iron cute ones. Any further comments?
All right. We are being asked to give feedback to the administration on whether to return to council with a proposal for various improvements in Old Town neighborhood, and number two, receive direction to develop a five-year sidewalk improvement plan for Old Town neighborhood. So let's start deliberations or discussions on the first one. Any comments or direction from council? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Matt, I had another question. So the February 12th meeting that was held over in the Eagle Room, refresh my memory if that was, were these specific proposals presented at that meeting?
That's correct. We provided this rendering-
Your microphone's not on.
That's correct. We, we provided this rendering, as well as the one of Bush and Second, and they haven't been changed since.
But the specific questions that are being asked tonight is about the improvements, as well as the sidewalk improvement project? So both of those were, proposals were presented there for feedback?
No, the, the sidewalk five-year plan was not presented at the, the meeting. That was one thing that we had heard from the community, that was they wanted a proactive plan.
Okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Walsh?
I have a lot of thoughts. I think focusing on the pedestrian safeway, safety at that intersection is fantastic, and I think that's absolutely essential. If we can't have the bulbouts because of bus width or bus turning, I'd like to know what the administration's alternative suggestion is, because I think that's important in considering this as an option before we make any approvals. But I think it's absolutely essential that we make adjustments there for the safety of the children and our crossing guards. I think it would be very important to hear from Chief Beerbaum about what our options are for the interim, until that point that we can make physical changes for what we can do for police enforcement, particularly in that morning period when we have kids crossing. So I would be very interested in that. I think from my perspective, the second essential improvement that we're looking for here is to improve the bumper-to-bumper traffic so that we don't have people speeding through the neighborhoods. And so I've heard that there's conversation happening with the school district, but from what I've heard tonight, I haven't heard anything that's going to move the needle on that. And so I'm going to push back a little bit there and say, hey, we need to keep this ball rolling and actually have a conversation about what's going to make a difference there. I think it's important hearing from David Kapler about the school buses not getting out of IMS very quickly. And as a parent of a kid who's at PCMS, I can tell you, those buses get out there fast. And so I'm curious why IMS is having an issue there. And I'd be interested to know what, you know, if there's any data on the speeds of the IMS and the IHS buses, and what the school district is doing for improvements there, because I, I think it's very, very important. I know at PCMS, you've got a very good bus utilization. Part of that is probably because they're, where the parents come from includes a wider scope area. But I'd be interested to see what the school district is looking to do to improve those areas. Third, for the sidewalks, I know our Transportation Advisory Board is looking at crossing and sidewalk policies. And so I'm really hesitant to move ahead on option two, when the master mobility plan is supposed to include some specific recommendations here. So my preference would be take action on option number one, because that's essential for the student crossing, but hold off on option number two and hear what the TAB has to advise on what's our policy around how we want to ensure sidewalks on one side, sidewalks on both sides, sidewalk widths, things like that, that they have spent a whole year talking about. And so I'd be hesitant to move forward on that. And then also, from that perspective, budget. I think we need to have a conversation about where the budget comes from, from this, what it offsets- it offsets, what our future maintenance costs are for those sidewalks, how that increases from putting these things in. So I, I'm interested in the larger conversation about the costs and maintenance costs of that. And then just one more note. If we end up with a speed hump or anything at that Second Avenue intersection, will we plan to remove the turtles?
Yes.
Fantastic. So that was my long list of questions that I think are going to be important when we're considering this, um, just in general.
Councilmember Ray?
Matt, have you, the, the larger you, the royal you, have you guys looked at what the root cause of this is? Because when I listen to public comments tonight and previously and, and this, I mean, I'm hearing there's a problem around keeping people safe and kids safe at school time. There's, uh, reducing pass-through traffic. They're slowing traffic down. There's a traffic congestion issue. Um, and then there's this idea that the data doesn't match your perceived reality. Have you guys taken a, a step back and looked at, you know, what the root cause of this is?
Yes, we've had quite a bit of conversation about this and really it does boil down to the school. We've, last year, we had some conversation, hard conversations with the school district, and we will continue to do so to see if we can reduce congestion because that, that really is the thing that's been driving this, at least as far as what we've seen from both a congestion and speeding, uh, point of view.
It, it feels to me like some of the things that we're proposing to do here are treating the symptoms of this problem, not the cause of this problem. And so sometimes when I have a cold or the flu and I have a headache, I will, I will treat the symptoms and I think that's important and I think it's important here too. But I think we, if we keep doing this, we're not going to make a difference because we have a very, very complex, uh, problem here. And we need to understand the why behind that problem so we can, we can, um, address the why instead of trying to put Band-Aids on, on the symptoms.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yeah, so, um, earlier there was some discussion about having Chief Beerbaum speak to the enforcement. So I wondered if now would be an appropriate time. I, I also wanted to make some comments on the enforcement questions.
Good evening, council. Chief Scott Beerbaum. Thanks for the opportunity to talk about some of the enforcement efforts within the Old Town area and, and this conversation. True, kind of what Matt was talking about earlier, there's multiple parts and what councilmember Goodman was mentioning too, there's multiple parts to address these type of issues. Engineering enforcement education, that's the old adage that, that goes hand in hand with this. So some of the engineering pieces, of course, is mostly being covered by Matt and the enforcement piece, you're right, hasn't been included. As the conversations and as the concerns have been raised by the neighborhoods, we have, of course, increased some enforcement in that area, but not just at Second and Bush. There is multiple areas, if you talk about Old Town and talk about the different roads that feed into Second Avenue to the school. We are talking about all of those, Bush, Andrews, and even north of Sunset is impacted by this as well. So that's part of the Old Town as well. There has been enforcement in the, the area. Since the beginning of the school year, just along Second Avenue itself, there's been over 50 citations issued regarding cut through, failed to yield signs. He, Matt did talk about one of the issues is Southeast Evans and that, that was a, a focal point. And strategically, we've been focusing on, um, small parts of the overall complex system of Second Avenue traffic and Sunset and Old Town traffic. Earlier in the year, we had a focused effort on Southeast Evans to address like the turning in and out of that neighborhood. That's one part of this. We also addressed cut-through traffic through the community center parking lot. That's something that hasn't been mentioned tonight as well. And that's something that gets enforced periodically as well. So it's not just Second, uh, Second and Bush. It is all those intersections, all those locations throughout that area. Again, multiple emphasis efforts by our traffic enforcement group, our patrol people as well. Just since the school year alone, we've only had, so I do appreciate the comments on data from our community members. One of the things is we do depend on those reports and there are things that are not reported. There are stuff that is handled or, um, in some of those conversations or the presentations that community members have made, we go back and look to see what has been reported. So just this school year alone, we've only had three collisions. One of those collisions is actually is our speed trailer that we placed down there. It got hit by a vehicle. That had been reported. So it is, we do depend on that data. So I do appreciate the comments on that, but that is what helps drive some of our decision-making of how we apply resources. Again, competing, um, not diminishing the importance of this conversation, but we're also talking about other neighborhoods within, within the community that we're trying to apply those resources. So if we have three collisions, then we're basing it off of some of those collisions, how we need to address it and the complaints. And we do appreciate the communication from the neighborhood that has, they've come forward on this issue as well. Is there specific questions that you would like to try to have answered?
Councilmember Hunt?
Earlier, there was a goal for the traffic improvement, which was to not rely on enforcement. And so I'm wondering to what extent enforcement does play a part in these solutions. And it seems to me, as councilmember Goodman had spoken to earlier, that for a lot of things, there's an enforcement component. So, so what is that component envisioned to be?
Correct. Absolutely. I, I do agree there is always a component of enforcement. To answer a little bit of the context of that question, I believe what Matt was trying to reference is using the example of the, the no-turn at Southeast Evans. It's very effective when we have a police officer stationed at that intersection for reducing or changing driver behavior by being there to, they see that there's a potential for a ticket. We can't be at every intersection at all the time. It's just, we, we cannot. We do not have enough resources within this community to do that. And, and for us to be able to do that, we are going to have a longer-term plan. Internally, as a city, we've also have a mobility steering committee internally work group that is focusing on these, these type of issues. We are talking about partnering with engineering, police department, economic development. There's a lot of these people, stakeholders are coming to have this bigger conversation. But to directly for the law enforcement piece, we are instructing our officers to address these issues when they have time, but we're also balancing it with calls for service. So we are committed to addressing this. We have been issuing citations for this. Our school resource officers also having conversations within the school to try and change driver behavior as well. So it, it is an ongoing effort.
Thank you. Are there then certain, um, kinds of improvements then that are considered not, that are considered to rely, so the, the no-left-turning, those are categorized as rely on enforcement versus, I guess, a speed limit where it, it requires some enforcement from time to time, but that's unacceptable and not, not in that relies heavily on enforcement category? Is there, is there actually like some sort of classification there?
Not specifically, but I think exactly what we were saying and what we were talking about was the, um, things that would be regulatory that would be hard to enforce. The speed size, speed limits are easier to evaluate and monitor, I think, in terms of, just from the data side, from the engineering side, we can see how the speeds are, are interacting and see how cars are, are moving through the neighborhood. And typically, you know, the speeds, speeds don't change too much in town. So it's, it's an easier thing from our perspective. I can't speak for police, but, but from the regulatory science, that's primarily what I was looking at was things that we would install, that we would require an officer to be there at the intersection to, to make it work measurably.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. In the, chief in the Q and A's, there is a chart, um, the report of how many traffic-related incidents have occurred in the Old Town neighborhood in the last 12 months. And there is, uh, there are columns for 2017, 2018, and then it says 2019 year-to-date. Do you know what that 2019 year-to-date means?
Yes, that original data, I believe, was compiled last fall when this first came forward. So I think it's just a, that data is a reminder of what the initial information was shared back last fall.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like, um, we're talking about enforcement. And so it looks like the kinds of things that we're talking about, that enforcement is down, not up. Traffic stops are down, infractions are down, hit and runs are relatively the same, three, two, and one for year-to-date on 2019. Traffic collisions, looks like they were down, now they're back up again. Reckless driving, maybe down a little bit, now it's back up. And traffic emphasis, it doesn't seem like there's anything additional. So, um, it seems like we've had less of an emphasis on enforcement in this area based on this chart.
Got it. Granted, that year-to-date, I'm trying to remember when exactly it was, but that was, I believe, nine or 10 months of data as opposed to the whole year. So I'd have to pull up. I apologize for not having that complete data for you at this point. And I recognize that there's a lot of different variations that occur. I'm trying to pull up this as we're talking, so I apologize. You can share it up there. So again, I mean, looking at the, the data, we do have ups and downs. Some of the, we're depending upon what's reported to us and what is not reported to us. Traffic emphasis are typically officer-driven. Traffic stops are, are officer-initiated as well. I'd have to look at the complete year's data to, to verify on this. I do know that we were, um, there was conversation internally about once the, some of the original Old Town improvements were first initiated, we did step back from enforcement to see kind of what kind of driving behaviors we would have when they, that was an internal conversation when they were first implemented. So I'd have to overlay that with like the data for 2018 on the, the traffic stops and infractions.
And you mentioned, um, traffic group. What's our traffic group?
Engineering, police department, economic development, or I'm sorry, internally, my, my department, police department. We do have, um, assigned officers for traffic enforcement.
We do? Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Say, Mr. Strayer, Bob.
You can just call me Wally.
Wally?
I think there's a little more discussion that's probably required regarding, uh, police traffic enforcement. Chief Beerbaum and I have, uh, have looked at this. I, I'm uncomfortable with the resources that we provide on a day-to-day basis for traffic enforcement. In my experience, I think it's important to have a dedicated, uh, traffic supervisor, traffic sergeant that takes ownership for this. I think it would be great for us to have lots of resources that we could put toward traffic. Those resources vary from day to day. So I've asked Chief Beerbaum to, uh, create a traffic sergeant that would be responsible for managing, uh, those resources. So I think that's an important first step and he has committed to me during the course of 2020 that we'll be able to, uh, have that position be in place. Moving forward, uh, we need to use additional resources for traffic in addition to the officers that we have deployed, uh, any given day. The chief and I have talked about bringing in additional law enforcement resources. I believe it's the state police, uh, that is available for, uh, additional enforcement activity. And so that is something that we are, are looking at and will be developing a, a financial plan to do that as well. But I think at the end of the day, it is clear that we need a more targeted, uh, traffic enforcement effort by the Issaquah Police Department. And so we are moving toward that. I think having a sergeant, having a, a responsible, uh, party whose main job it is to worry about traffic citywide, uh, has certainly worked in other communities that I've been in, is, I think, a resource we need to allocate. So that is the, uh, the very first step. But I think also then, uh, coming up with budget plans so that we can bring in additional resources as needed as well. So councilmember Goodman and members of the council, I hear you. We cannot do this alone with engineering improvements. There needs to be a more targeted enforcement area. It is a resource question and we will manage the resource appropriate.
All right, I'm going to do a time check because we said this would be 60 minutes and it's now 60 minutes, but we haven't really given clear directions to staff. So we'll continue, but I just want to let people know that we are at the end of the allotted time here. Councilmember Martz?
So, uh, it's, it's, uh, it's always tough to, uh, when folks in the community worked up about an issue to push back, but I am concerned that the data that we have in front of us doesn't show a clear problem. I'm concerned that, uh, we're talking about, uh, problems with the school district or this being a school district issue. I think the data in front of us doesn't show a particular surge around the high school start time, any worse than any other time from 5:00 AM through the whole rest of the day, basically, on Second. I'm concerned that a lot of the traffic volumes are actually commuter traffic. We know that the majority of trips through Issaquah at any given day neither begin nor end in the city. Wouldn't surprise me if some of the traffic, uh, coming up Second is folks, uh, coming from the south or likewise, um, heading southbound. But the data just doesn't support, uh, that there is a particular spike around the high school hours. And the data also doesn't show that people are speeding. So I'm troubled by us making public policy decisions, uh, when the data doesn't support it. So I think there's things we should always do when folks in any community or any region of the city come to us with concerns about, uh, whether the city can do more in that area, but the data does not show a crisis. Thank you.
So would you like them to return with the proposal or?
I think, I'm just, I guess I'm reacting to this conversation about that we need to get with the district board and we need to solve this as a district-city problem. I don't, I see this as folks in neighborhoods saying people are coming through too fast and I think we should help with that, but this doesn't, the data doesn't, um, suggest that it's a crisis. So, uh, I don't, I would love to hear what my fellow council members, uh, think about this challenge.
Chief, councilmember Goodman?
So, um, I'm, I'm looking at Chris's computer, but I have the same, but I don't have it pulled up. So I think it does show, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure what data you're talking about. I think it's the data, this one?
Put it up on the screen.
Doesn't it show that in the morning that there's a?
Right around 8:00 AM. It's the same, it's more or less, more or less the same from 5:00 AM through the early afternoon, right? 150 to 200 plus, but the, the peak for schools is seven or eight o'clock hour. And it's the same as, it's, the peak is actually 6:00 AM, long before school, school starts.
So, uh, my trouble here is that I work on Sixth and Sunset and I face Sunset. And so I experience what all these folks are talking about. I see it, I, um, and sometimes it's city vehicles who are tearing around the corner, past my building and then tearing around an alley. It's not just the public. But, um, I see that there's a change in behavior when it's schools traffic. I think commuter traffic is different. There's a behavior change when it's school traffic. Drivers have, they're just different. And it's, I don't know that it's students and parents, but I see it as well. And I don't know that I'm hearing so much as it's a crisis in that I know it's been an issue for, um, 25 years. And, um, I agree with Chris to some extent that, that, um, we keep trying to figure out what we're going to do to solve all the various problems and what is the root cause? And I think the root cause is just a whole lot of traffic in a smaller area and, um, just like a, uh, ice cube tray, the water, you know, fills up the little areas. If you've got some capacity on the, uh, neighborhood streets, folks are going to go down those streets when they can because it's faster. The left-hand turn signs that were there, the no-left-hand turn signs, they probably work to some degree, but if we're not going to get any enforcement, then they're not, they're not meaningful. I would be in favor of putting them back if we were going to get at least some help enforcing that. I did go to the, um, open house that night and one of the comments that I made to the school district official who was there, and I'll make that comment again tonight, is I would like to see, um, the school, particularly, the high school in particular. I would like to see, um, the school, particularly, the high school, in particular, the student body, get involved in, um, ideas about how to, um, what to do. Um, the students have, um, our young people have an interest in, you know, reducing single occupancy vehicles, in particular, they're concerned about, uh, traffic congestion and what it does to the environment, and, um, we hear from them about that kind of an issue. I think they would be interested in figuring out ways to reduce traffic. Um, I would be interested in, you know, giving this problem to them, and seeing what they can come up with to, um, keep folks out of that, um, out of those neighborhoods in the mornings, but I, but I think we are, they can probably help with, um, both engineering and enforcement, all three, and education, if we let them put their creative minds to work. I think to some degree, we're just recycling some of the same potential, um, ideas for solving things, and they haven't worked. One idea is maybe, um, temporary physical changes, for example. So let's say, these are just ideas. I like to throw ideas on the table, even if they don't stick, it's a way for us to continue to be creative, but what if you had temporary traffic arms in the morning that pulled out, so that you can't have any left turns from Sunset into the neighborhoods in the morning, but once that traffic, once that high traffic volume, once the schools are in, then those arms move back, so that you're not permanently restricting traffic. So I'm not saying that that's necessarily the right idea, but I think we have a lot of opportunities here, especially involving, um, the student body, to see what headway we can make. I would like to, um, I would like to continue working on this issue for the neighborhood, we're hearing about it. I know there's a problem, like I said, I see it. Um, I also am interested in having the, um, sidewalk improvement program addressed during our next CIP, um, round, uh, because I think it's time we get that on our CIP, so that we can, um, improve the sidewalks and the connectivity in that neighborhood. Um, and thank you for the interest in Dedicated Traffic Team for Enforcement, I'm all for that. Those are my comments right now. Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Walsh, and then Councilmember Hunt?
So, Chief Birbaum, I'm, I'm in the Highlands, so I'm most familiar with the traffic calming efforts that were up in the Highlands, and I know that was a combination of engineering, education, and enforcement, and so I'm wondering if there was a schedule, a plan, something that you created for enforcement in the Highlands, and how we might be able to see something similar to that in Old Town? Because I know it's not just an enforcement issue, but I think it would be nice to hear if there was a plan, or, you know, some sense of how that was going to be accomplished.
Okay.
Fantastic. And then, um, secondarily, what Councilmember Goodman said about temporary changes, I think this is a great example of, hey, we made some temporary changes in Old Town with the traffic calming, um, saw whether or not that worked, and then implemented the permanent changes. I could see doing that with the intersection on Second. You know, there are definitely ways with temporary structures to narrow the crossing area, to see whether or not that would be effective before investing that full amount there on the intersection with a permanent change, particularly one that had to be removed in previous years.
Real quick on that, um, I have talked to the school district, the transportation group, uh, last week, uh, and they'd have committed to two buses during the summer, too, so we can put up cones or, or something to see how much we can narrow the intersection, and play around to see if we could make it work for both buses and pedestrians. So, that will be on our, our docket for the summer, to evaluate that intersection for bus movements.
Okay, I'm gonna push back there. Great, to do something over the summer, when you're looking at a permanent change, but what about the idea of just putting up something that is temporary, both with a speed hump, and with, um, lane narrowing, that would help in the interim, when we're talking about these kids in the crossing yards?
We certainly can look at that. I think, again, we're looking for direction, uh, on a package of things, and so, uh, my hope is that the council will sign off on the option-one pieces, so we can move forward with that, and then continue with whatever additional items you'd like. So if you'd like us to, you know, put some temporary things, or come up with a, you know, a menu of what those might be, and they come back to you in a future meeting, we can do that.
Okay. So what I would propose to the council, and I'd love to hear feedback from others, is I'm very interested in option-one, but I'm also interested in option-one B, which would be, what can we get out there next month? That would be a temporary change, following after the ideas of the traffic calming, um, test that we did in Old Town, where we put in temporary structures, and I think we could do that for pennies on the dollar, as a way to test out what is effective on that intersection, before making permanent changes that could only be accomplished over the summer.
Councilmember Hunt?
Um, well, one concern I have about the intersection, which, um, the intersection design with the raised, uh, intersection and the bulb-outs, was that, um, it sounds a lot like what was there before, and what didn't work previously for that exact intersection. So, um, I think, my concern with the current design is basically that it, it was, my understanding is that there was intersection design like this before, and there were issues, so I would like to better understand how, um, how this would be different, and would be more successful, and I haven't really, um, gotten an understanding of that yet. I do think we need to make improvements to the pedestrian safety. I think we've heard from, um, residents that we need to make changes to improve, improve pedestrian safety in this area, so I think for me, that's been compelling. I definitely think there's also a behavior component, and education component, that needs to go with whatever, uh, with whatever engineering improvements are, are incorporated, but, um, I think those should work together. I don't think that it's one or the other. I really like the idea of, um, involving the high school students. I actually met with a high school student, uh, last week, for the school news program that she was doing, and I mentioned that we had been talking about, um, improvements, that there had been neighborhood workshops and neighborhood meetings, and, um, she, she seemed to think that students would be interested in this, and I, I completely agree with Councilmember Goodman, that they would be able to provide really useful feedback, and, um, I think also, really useful feedback on how we might better address some of the issues around the carpooling, and the, um, current, current, uh, lack of carpooling, and, um, also around prioritization of buses. And, um, I will point out, too, that in our current code for compact schools, so the kind of schools that we want to have going forward, we want to be prioritizing buses, so this is a good example, I think, where we can think through, um, how to work with the school district. I definitely am supportive of working more with them on that, and I think that, um, if you compare the traffic patterns on weeks when the school is out, versus when the school is in, there's a notable change in, in, um, traffic throughout the city, including in this neighborhood, and so that would also be an interesting sort of data, um, comparison for the weeks where school is out for midwinter break and those sorts of things. It would be a week, a school week, but it would also be a different, um, or it would be a work week, but it wouldn't be a school week, so I think that would be interesting to look at some of the, if there's data to support how much of this is school traffic versus regular, um, work traffic, or cut-through traffic. So, so basically, I'm somewhat supportive of, I'm supportive of intersection improvements. I'm still somewhat concerned that the current design may not work, because, um, it previously didn't work, and so I would be more interested in some sort of temporary or, um, improvements that the neighborhood could, could weigh in on, that we could actually see it in action, if that's possible, I'd be more interested in that. And then the other thing, the last thing, um, on the sidewalks, is that I would be very interested to know if we can use the camera fund for the sidewalks, um, for sidewalk improvements, and I would also be interested to think, in the future, if it would be possible to have more camera enforcement, because this seems like a kind of camera, it just seems like a kind of enforcement that would be, um, not require an officer, but it definitely, it's definitely something that people do, um, so if we could have another camera, or if we'd have more enforcement by camera.
So, camera enforcement is only allowed by state law in school zones for speed, and then also red light cameras, those are our two options for automated camera enforcement.
So do we have, are all of our school zones, though, or is the entire school zone covered by the camera?
No. We have, well, one set of, we have two cameras, one for northbound, one for southbound, on Second Avenue, um, further down south by Southeast Evans, um, but we do not, other school, uh, zones within the city, we do not have speed enforcement cameras.
Okay. So I think, I mean, I think because it's a revenue stream that's, we can use for improving school safety, I think that it's a interesting, um, I think it's maybe something to consider, especially if we start thinking about sidewalk improvements and ongoing maintenance that will be necessary to improve the pedestrian safety around these neighborhoods. Um, and then, yeah, just plus-one on the need to communicate more with the school, and work more on the carpooling, and work more also on, you know, is this the best way for buses to go through, or are there other options that might, um, and, and maybe also address the cause, rather than address the symptoms, as Councilmember Ray was talking about, so maybe we can work more with them on that as well.
So, Councilmember Hall, you haven't weighed in, do you, would you like a chance to, and you don't have to, but?
Sure, real briefly, um, I haven't weighed in, 'cause I'm kinda just chewing whatever everyone's saying, or in my head right now. I haven't heard anything that I disagree with, uh, so far. Um, I'll just say, in terms of, um, direction, I'm comfortable moving forward with option-one. Um, I would like to see that menu of options for, um, what we can do in the interim, though. I thought that was a very helpful comment, thank you, um, to Administrator Bob Kowits. For option-two, um, I think Councilmember Walsh had a really good point. I would really like to know what the Transportation Advisory Board thinks about all this work, especially with regard to, um, the future planning of sidewalks, um, in the Old Town area or across the city, um, so that would be my feedback there. I'm not sure if maybe we could get that information at the upcoming meeting, or if that's something we could have beforehand, but I'll just put that out there.
Okay, I'm gonna take a stab at summarizing. Uh, Councilmember Martz, you go first, so I can think a little bit longer.
Sure, okay, so, uh, I, I support, um, uh, option-one. Um, I think it, uh, I think it would be good to pursue. Uh, I continue to wanna be careful, I think we need more data on how much traffic on Second, how much of the problem is high school students, how much is, uh, passed through for other folks, um, how much of these cut-throughs on Andrews and Bush occur after the high school has started. Um, I, I wanna be really careful, though we don't demonize our high school students, really, because they have the audacity to wanna drive to school and not carpool. Um, that's not a crime in this state, and, uh, so if there's a problem, let's make sure that it's really the high school students, before we decide to lean on the high school students. Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. Um, I just, um, just to clarify, um, I think involving the school, because it's, their school's there, a lot of your school traffic, traffic, um, I wasn't suggesting that it was their, all their fault, or that we wanna demonize them, just to be clear. Um, I, too, would be interested in, um, things that we can do before the summer, um, and then I also, I'm not sure that, um, I'm looking at the Washington Administrative Code, 468-95-330, talking about 300-foot school zones, and what you, um, uh, that the school zones are 300 feet, but I also, according to this WAC, says that you can have schools' zone, zones that are, that extend beyond 300 feet, as long as you have them based on a traffic and engineering investigation, so maybe that's what you're talking about, Matt, that the city's looking into, but I also think it would be interesting, um, to look at that, look at that, um, in concert with looking at the, uh, the cameras, the school safety zone cameras, because if you're only allowed to have them in school zones, can you extend your school zones by city code, thereby extending the use, um, and number of traffic cameras in the school zones? Thanks.
Councilmember Ray, did you, you, okay, all right. So, um, on question number one, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because we've heard a lot of input tonight, uh, it sounds as though we have a tentative agreement, that we go ahead with proposal, but we have lots and lots of questions, and we have, uh, a lot of suggestions on different directions, and I heard clearly from Councilmember Walsh, and I would plus-one that, that possibly a proposal be divided between things that could be done immediately and temporarily, and things that would be more permanent. Um, all right, so now, did I summarize correctly? Tell me if, if I'm wrong.
I think the only, only thing is, we just have to be careful that we're, we don't have an agreement, we're just providing feedback. We're not taking any action, or taking any votes. That's all.
I agree, yeah.
So let me try at one-B.
All right.
Um, what, what I'd like, uh, to do is to, uh, continue working on the Second Avenue and Bush Street improvements. I think there's an opportunity for us to test some of these things out, so let us do that over the next few months, as we finalize the design for this, so we would come back to you, um, with plans and specifications for improvements, once we've done some of that temporary work. We will reach out to the high school, uh, both to students and the administration, the students, to provide an opportunity for them to get involved in the issue, and provide some feedback, be it on carpooling, or ride-sharing, whatever that might be. Uh, also talk with the, the district and the high school administration, about what we can do from their perspective on these issues, uh, look at the, the, the traffic camera issue, uh, see if there's opportunities to expand that in any way, look at state law, look at local law regarding the use of those dollars, um, and, um, move forward with the balance of the, the option-one items, so we could do that, I think, without further council action. So we would come back to you, um, once we have those improvements designed, uh, we'll keep you posted on any sort of temporary, uh, testing that we do, so to make you aware of that. We'll continue to work with the police departments, so the next touch of this for the, for the council would be a review of a proposed improvement on a specific dollar mountain, an appropriate budget amendment. How's that for a 1A?
Sound good? All right.
Great.
Uh, on question-two, I did not hear consensus on moving forward to develop a five-year sidewalk improvement plan, so, uh, perhaps we could do a round robin, um, to clarify the direction on that, whether or not we want the administration to go forward with, uh, a proposal. Uh, Councilmember Walsh?
So, I'm not ready to move forward with that, until we hear back from the TAB.
Okay.
TAB?
TAB? Councilmember Goodman?
Um, I, um, think we need input from the TAB, but I also think that it's high time that this project gets on the CIP. Um, it's our, one of our oldest neighborhoods, and, um, it needs better sidewalk connections, so I think there's a place in that process for the TAB, but I am interested in moving forward with that process.
We have a CIP process for this very purpose, which is to identify our long-term capital investments. I think the TAB should have an opportunity to weigh in on this, and every other transportation-related capital improvement. I don't think this needs a call-in, I think this is part of the CIP process, and I would expect that if the administration thinks that this is important, they will bring it forward for deliberation when we open up the CIP again.
Uh, Councilmember Hunt, sorry, and then Councilmember Hall?
Well, I think, so I agree that we have a CIP process, but this seems like an opportunity to express whether or not there's interest in, um, in making a change. I think that, so I'm supportive, and I think that, um, I am supportive of seeing a proposal for the sidewalks, and I think that, um, unless I'm mistaken, I think the TAB would be involved in the, those planning efforts, and is already thinking about sidewalks, um, so I don't think it contradicts that, but I also am interested in, um, supporting inclusion of these sidewalk improvements in our next CIP, so I guess that would be my direction.
Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, I would like to see this chewed on more by the transportation, by TAB.
Okay. Um, I don't know if I was counting correctly there, but, um, to me, I've walked through Old Town in and seen the condition of the sidewalks. And I think it is absolutely an important thing for us to get into our CIP. I think that, I agree with Councilmember Ray's comments, that it could be a part of the process of preparing that for the CIP to check in with the TAB. So I think you have direction to move forward with that proposal, but to be sure that it is passed by the Transportation Advisory Board. Is that okay with everyone, as a summary? Do you have enough direction? Matt, do you feel like you have direction, clear direction from us? Do you think we've summarized? Okay. All right, are we complete with this? Anybody else want to weigh in on this issue? All right, thank you so much, and thank you, Matt. We'll move on to the item number two. So item number two is ID 0467, Old Town Land Use Code Amendments. And Kristin Leeson, our senior planner, is going to be the presenter.
Okay, we have 45 minutes for this one, so it'll be 8:45.
Okay, here I go. Good evening. Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner with the Development Services Department. And I am here, the first round, to talk about the proposed Old Town Land Use Code Amendments. That's not working. Well, okay. So our purpose tonight, as I mentioned, is to talk about the proposed Land Use Code Amendments, and to ensure that they are consistent with the Old Town Plan and the direction that is laid out there. So what we are looking for is feedback, and any requests for changes or further research that you may have. And our proposal, we're proposing to return, proposing to return this to the March 16th council meeting for action. I'm going to give you a little history, and, whoa. I apologize. This is not my computer. Okay. There we go. In 1999, the plan was first adopted. It was not touched again until 2009, when two small changes were made to remove any mention of the southeast bypass. In 2014, we had just finished the Central Issaquah Plan and Central Issaquah Standards after a seven-year process. And the council at that time said, enough, we need to go back and focus on Old Town now. They haven't, they haven't, we haven't looked at it in a while. So there were several council goals that were adopted in 2014, two of them having to do with traffic, and one with economic vitality. So in 2015, Mayor Butler appointed an Old Town Vitality Task Force, which focused mostly on Front Street and Sunset, and the economics of Old Town. They made a recommendation that same year, and one of those was to create a streetscape plan. Another was to help DIA form better partnerships with community groups to improve the beautification of Front Street and Sunset. And the third was to update the Old Town Subarea Plan and the Old Town Standards. So in 2016, we began the update of the Old Town Standards. It was amended, it was adopted in December of 2018. And part of what was adopted in there were, was an action program, which included immediate actions, short-term actions, and longer-term actions to implement the goals and policies that were adopted in the plan. So our goal tonight is to discuss six of the immediate actions that we are proposing as part of Old Town Updates. I don't know. The first one is action number two. Action number two was to reduce the heights in the CBD Cultural and Business District, the multifamily high district on East Sunset Way only, and in the single-family duplex area. In the cultural and business district, the existing height, base height, is 45 feet. It can go up to 65 feet with conditions such as step backs, and reductions in impervious surface, and so forth. The proposal is to reduce it to 40 feet, or three stories, whichever is lower. That would be the maximum height. In multifamily high, the base height is currently 40 feet. The maximum height is 65 feet. We are proposing to reduce that height down to 40, keep it at 40 feet, or three stories, whichever is lower, and remove, make that the maximum height. When we did this, we realized that multifamily medium, if we left it as was, could still go up to 50 feet. And it is supposed to be less dense than multifamily high. So we are proposing also to keep the base height as the maximum height at 40 feet, remove the 50-foot maximum. Single-family duplex, we are proposing to reduce from 30 feet to 25 feet, or two stories, whichever is lower. There is no maximum currently there, you cannot go any higher than that. So the recommendations for the reductions in the cultural and business district and the multifamily high came out of our Old Town, or actually, for all of them, came out of our Old Town Subarea Plan work, and what we heard from the neighborhood. So I'll just flip through these. These show some existing heights and how they're measured. This is the, one of the older buildings in town, which they're sort of measured, you know, halfway, if it's a gabled roof, it's measured halfway up. So that would be 37 feet, so it would still meet the standards. The library would still meet the standards. It's measured right to the middle of this roof line up there. This is an MFH, it would be measured at this point, it's 34 feet. This one would no longer be, this one would be called legally non-conforming. It would exceed the 40-foot height limit, even measured at the middle of the gable. This is a residential property, which also would be legally non-conforming. It's 30 feet from the ground to the top, and the garage is included in the height measurement. And this one would be as high as you could go with the gabled roof at 25 feet. Action number three, this is immediate action number three, is to change the impervious, impervious surface ratios. This came as a task force recommendation. Part of the reason for doing this was to help properties redevelop. Specifically, in multifamily high, the reason was, there has been an ask, and you'll see it in a minute, to include or allow more commercial, small-scale, commercial properties on East Sunset Way. And in order to do that, you would need to probably increase impervious surface so that people could get the required parking and ADA requirements that would be needed for the commercial properties. So the proposal is, in the cultural and business district, it's currently 85%. Proposing to increase impervious to 95%. And in multifamily high, the existing impervious surface maximum is 50%, and we're proposing to increase that to 75%. So currently, just for the CBD, this is the area that would be affected. Everything that you see in gray there is currently impervious surface. So much of what is there is close to, if not at, the proposed 95%. The multifamily high is a little different. It would be this fair area here, east of Sunset Way. As you can see, particularly on the south side, many of these, you know, are at or less than the existing 50% that's allowed across the street, they're a little bit higher. Action number four was to require ground floor commercial on Front Street. What the task force asked for was to require ground floor retail on Front Street. And it was, after going through the old, the planning process, the Planning Policy Commission, we included retail, and people felt that it was a little too constrained, that it would be hard for property owners to rent out those properties if it was just retail. So we opened it up to commercial, which includes pretty much all of the uses that are currently allowed. And it would just be those properties, a lot that front, on Front Street, right here in the CBD, not all of the CBD. Action number five is to allow small-scale retail in MFH, multifamily high, on East Sunset Way only. So yes, there are currently properties that are already there. They are either grandfathered in, if they are legally non-conforming.
Kristin?
Yes.
Councilmember Ray has a question.
Can you back up one?
Sure.
And just educate me here?
Sure.
What's the difference between retail and commercial? What, I'm assuming that retail is a subset of commercial? So what are the uses in commercial that are not retail?
Retail is more service industries. You walk in, you buy something, you walk out. It's a grocery store, it's something that you don't need an appointment for. This is, this is really broad, but it's kind of something you don't need an appointment for. Office, or commercial's going to include more office uses. So an insurance company, a medical office, something like that.
Hair, nail salon?
Hair and nail salon would be retail.
Okay.
Councilmember Hunt?
So you mentioned that there was some non-conforming uses with the other changes, and I think that there would be some non-conforming residential here, is that true?
It would be true. There are, I believe, two uses there, one apartment complex and one single-family home, that are solely residential. So yes, those would be legally non-conforming.
Okay. And so in that case, it would only affect them if they wanted to redevelop?
Correct.
Okay.
And I had, I had asked this question, but I think it's good for the public to know. If commercial-covered art, art schools, art galleries, maker spaces, those kinds of things, that some people may not consider those being commercial spaces?
Yes, that would be included.
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
I think I finished this one. So yes, they are, there are currently some there. They are either legally non-conforming, they were approved a long time ago, went in a long time ago. They are also allowed, small-scale retail is also allowed in multifamily high within a mixed-use, only within a mixed-use building. And that just has not been appealing to people who wanted to put any kind of commercial on that property. So this would allow small-scale retail as a standalone use. Immediate action number six is to remove Old Town parcels as transfer development right receiving sites. Do you all need me to explain the receiving site piece?
Councilmember Hunt?
I think just for, for the public, just not, not get into the technical, but just explain why you want, why this is of interest to change, that would be my...
So we have a Central Issaquah Plan, which is where we have planned all of our density to go. That is where we would like our density to go. And we also heard during the Old Town Plan and process, and the Code Amendments process, that people do not want more density in Old Town. So receiving sites allow that property owner who's identified as receiving site to buy development rights from what's called a sending site somewhere else in the city. And then they can either go higher, or they can build out more and increase their impervious surface. So with the idea that we do not want more density in Old Town, the idea is to remove those receiving sites from Old Town. Okay. And so we would be removing all language and amending the map as well. Next to last one is action number 15. To develop incentives that reduce parking requirements for neighborhood-oriented commercial projects, which then had to be defined. And we have defined it as a neighborhood-oriented business would be a business that has 10 or fewer locations throughout the United States that serves the daily or weekly needs of local residents. And the idea is that this would, this would be a 10% parking reduction for businesses that meet that definition in the cultural and business district only. Lastly, as we were going through this, we looked, there was a section in there about additional parking provisions. And what you see on the left, and I realize it's turned to the side, but I wanted north to be the same direction. The map that was used for these incentives was established in 1987, or 1986, as a part of the Local Improvement District, Living, Local Improvement District. And that has long since expired. It was used to do street improvements and put up lights, and the red lights that you see. That has since expired, and because we're trying to help some of these businesses, our proposal is to extend some of those, there are two provisions, and to extend those to include all of the CBD and the MFH. And the two provisions that already exist are that you are not required to put in additional parking for a change of use in an existing building. And the other is that if you expand your building, your existing building by 10% or less, you are not required to put in additional parking. That's been in place, those two provisions have been in place since 1986, when this was adopted. So those, those are our proposed amendments. We are hoping to, our plan is to bring these to council on March 16th for action. But tonight, we are just looking for direction to make sure that these meet the intent of the plan, and to ask for any changes or for the research that you might like to have from us.
All right, we start with questions and answers. So, do any of the councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Hunt?
The neighborhood, can you go back to the slide about the neighborhood-focused services incentive?
This one? Neighborhood-oriented businesses?
Yes, neighborhood-oriented commercial projects. So they have to have 10 or fewer locations throughout the United States and cater to the daily and our weekly needs of the local community. So is there more code somewhere, or more information about what that kind of business would, would and wouldn't be? And then I'm also wondering if there are other examples of this in other cities, and how it's worked, and if it's worked, if it's met the intent? Because it seems very specific, and I get, I think, more so than the other actions. I can clearly see what the intent is, but I just wonder if there are examples of how this has worked other places, and if these are the right specifications.
So I have not been able to find any code regarding incentives for neighborhood-oriented businesses. But this stemmed from a conversation when we were doing the Code Amendments, or I think even the Plan, back in 2017 or so, about not allowing franchise businesses to come in. And franchise businesses actually have more than 10, they're the opposite of this. So they have more than 10 businesses throughout the United States. And there are cities that prohibit those uses. So it's kind of the reverse of that. We want those local businesses, we want another grocery store back in here, we want a hardware store. It was just to do the reverse. So no, I don't, there isn't, I haven't been able to find anything else like this. I do know that there are some that prohibit franchises, and those have been successful.
Okay. And this, as this is written, it would allow franchises as long as they have less than 10 locations?
Yes.
Okay.
And that would be any allowed commercial use that's allowed.
Councilmember Walsh?
Thank you. I don't remember, are there any allowances for bonuses of far or height for affordable housing in this area?
No.
Okay. So none of the changes that we're making to reduce the max height will have any impacts on that?
No.
Thanks.
Any other questions from council? I think we have some people here who would like to provide public comments. So if you'll indicate that you want to speak. Doug, we'll start with you, and then Dave. Yeah, you go first. Yeah. Oh, and please state your name and your address for us, please.
Fine, okay. Excuse me. My name is Steve Bolliger. The address is 18724 Southeast 65th Place, Issaquah. I hate to throw cold water on the situation. I think the Planning Department's done a great job in documenting this fantastic area of Old Town, in terms of its typology, the forms, the character, and what's there. But we also have a process of relooking at the entire Title 18 Land Use Code. And that needs to move along and get through its review. And there's a lot of opportunities to sort of pull back and look at a different framework of how to look at both this and other areas in Issaquah. And I'm really concerned that we're losing some of those opportunities. I think we're nibbling at the edges with the existing code. I can give you numerous examples. I've worked on three very large projects that did shared parking. We were able to reduce the parking demands by over 50% by combining mixed-use uses, whether it's on the same property or adjacent properties. You know, the office, the residential, it's a beautiful mix. So is transit-oriented development, you know, on top of transit parking. So anyway, I'm just concerned that we're moving forward, and we have an opportunity to relook at some things. to relook at some things. I can go into, you know, using FAR for residential instead of so many dwelling units per acre. You know, how somebody decides how to chop up the building, what size of those units are. That should be the market. It shouldn't be so many dwelling units per acre. But there's a whole series of things that I think we could take advantage of. So I would really encourage the council to put a pause. There's some great information that's been provided here, but we also have another process coming along, and I think we could take advantage of that. So that's my two cents.
All right, thank you. Dave?
Good evening again. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. Four quick topics, hopefully. There's a building to the south of here that's a city-owned, and it's a city office, and it's in city zoning, city facility zoning. But its least restrictive adjacent zoning is the resident right next to it, because an alley would not make it adjacent. So we have a non-conforming use of using that building, I think, as an office. We've used it that way for years. But it's just one of those things that we need to be thinking about, because we're going to need more office space and those kinds of things. And it's a very low impact on the community as it's used now. But we maybe need to think about that one. The three-story limit for the city would, can we really pull off a city hall the size that we need in this area with three stories? Or should we be giving the city the option of having taller buildings so that we could retain a city hall in the downtown area? I did have a question, which has been resolved. A third issue is that if you had a building and first floor was retail, and your second and third floor on Front Street was commercial, making sure that you didn't have to have the whole first floor retail so that there would be a welcoming entryway from Front Street to that second and third floor. But now the whole building can be commercial and not, the retail requirement isn't there. Hopefully, we'll see a lot of retail, especially on the first floor. But we're also looking at getting other kinds of businesses here at second and third floor. Stormwater is a concern, but I know from my own experience how many buckets of rocks I've exported from my yard and the gravel we have. And I know I can infiltrate huge amounts of water on a fairly small area in the valley floor here because of just the type of soils we have. So having less impervious, less pervious surface could work if we have our landscape codes and our requirements. So where those plants are, are we taking advantage of the opportunity to infiltrate on that lesser area? You can do it. I think it can be done, but it would require a more sophisticated, maybe landscaping requirements, and especially during construction of those, following through to making sure the proper soils were in place and if there's any kind of filter fabric or whatever, that that's done correctly. But you can get a lot of water into the ground in this valley floor area. But you can also get hardly any if it's just hard-packed dirt. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak? Please go ahead.
Hi there. Alan Flintoff, 580 Sunset Way and Flintoff's Funeral Home. Sunset Way, and I'm not just sure how that works with the cultural and business district and then multifamily. I see that Sunset Way being a corridor to Issaquah, where maybe we'd like to see more wineries and tasting rooms, maybe little grocery stores, something other than just businesses that come in that are, come into Joe's Insurance or Joe's Attorney, that type of thing. But allowing us to have somebody that has a family business, where they have offices on the second story, and then you come in and you have the winery or whatever on the first floor, something to consider. I don't know if what you're doing works with that, but those things could be taken into consideration. So we have more of a walking Sunset Way, where you can enjoy Sunset Way, and that merges right into Front Street. We do some of those same things. So I know as a small business, that we have our offices on the second floor, and the whole first floor is now for our customers to come in and enjoy. I think that that could be super helpful for Sunset Way and those small businesses that are trying to do the same thing. Thank you.
Anyone else? Connie, and then Steve?
Connie Marsh, Levon Squawk. And I've been trying to stay out of this. I figured there were plenty of people who were watching this. Then I read it, and I read about impervious surface changes. And I read that there seemed to be no particular offset to the impervious surface changes, which brought me back to SEPA. And then I started looking for SEPA. I couldn't find it anywhere, so I had to ask for the SEPA. So it brought me back to what is the process in something like a land use code change that is a one-off instead of done in a cluster at the end of the year? And then I got lost and grumpy. And so then, and I sort of lit a bomb and started talking to everyone about my concerns. But it started with the impervious surface changes, because I spent hours and hours and hours with the Central Issaquah Plan on the EIS. And the EIS, the environmental review for the Central Issaquah Plan, had to address the impervious surface changes for the Central Issaquah Plan, because it was an environmental impact. And when I got ahold of the SEPA for this, it just said, eh, you know, this isn't a project review, so we don't have to address it. But if you read, and I'm going to read with you, this is about the Central Issaquah Plan area. "The intense development could increase impervious surface area on parcels, but it would focus more landscaping in the public realm, for example, rights of way in public parks. Increased impervious surface area could affect plants and animals and stormwater addressed in other sections of the draft EIS. The green necklace located in the urban area would offset in part the added urban impervious surfaces." So in my mind, you can raise the impervious surfaces, but you do have to have some consideration on how you are going to offset those impacts. And I don't see that consideration addressed in any way, shape, or form here. If the code changes, then it's simply allowed, and they, all they have to do is adhere to the stormwater manual. And as we found from the flooding, the stormwater manual, basically, we use the base, which covers like a 25-year storm, and then it's a free flow, because they've done what they could, and now the water gets to go. So in this situation, I like most of what has been done. So I hate to hold things back, because I just can't abide the environmental review that I don't think was done appropriately in this situation. So I don't know the how to solve it. I just know you cannot harm the environment when you're changing your code without addressing how you are going to offset that. And if you aren't going to offset that, then you have to do an EIS, because then you have a leftover environmental impact. And just applying your stormwater code is not a mitigation, an environmental mitigation, necessarily. But you have to analyze it to see if that's true. So I know, a little anal, but stormwater matters, as we found out not more than two weeks ago.
Oh, that's Steve.
Hi, good evening. Steve Pereira, Old Town, about 12 years now. So I want to talk about it in terms of just, I don't like it, and that's not useful for making conversation. Sorry about that. So I tried to be more specific. I had some of the same concerns Connie mentioned as far as the stormwater and the flooding. I have concern, maybe there is an increase in density and scope and scale that isn't talked about. I feel like it's also a bit of a, I'm sorry, this is kind of a rambling statement, I apologize for that, kind of a bait and switch. I was told you guys would get the CIP, and I'd get the Old Town left alone. I'm not getting that anymore. I dislike that aspect. I'm concerned with all these additional residences, where the people are going to park, where traffic's going to go. We're already talking about traffic impact to school safety zones, and we're going to add more people and more parking. Where's all that going to go? I don't hear that addressed. So I guess I'm looking at some point, and I've kept hoping somebody at some level of responsibility would better address those things than I've heard addressed so far. So I guess I would like to see this group say, we don't need to redevelop this particular area at this density that's being talked about. I also specifically have concerns with incentivizing businesses by reducing parking requirements when we already have parking requirements that aren't, for local businesses that aren't being met with existing off-street parking. And we're going to loosen those standards. At best, I would say, if you want to incentivize a grocery store specifically, then incentivize a grocery store specifically, don't incentivize every single business to have less parking to meet their needs, to incentivize them to come build a new product, and we'll come. Thank you.
Anyone else? So Steve, we don't usually let people speak twice, okay? Okay. So now it's time for the council to weigh in with feedback. Who would like to go first? Councilmember Walsh?
So first of all, I wanted to say, on the presentation of information to us, I very much appreciated having the letter from the Economic Vitality Commission, the letter, or the information from the Chamber of Commerce showing that they had reviewed it, and the feedback from PPC seemed very thorough. So with that in mind, my general feedback is that there have been a lot of touches, and I've seen this evolve quite a bit over that time, and so I'm fairly satisfied with what has come through with that.
Councilmember Hunt?
I have a little bit different perspective. One concern I have is around the developing incentives that reduce parking requirements for neighborhood-oriented commercial projects. I remember talking about this when I was on Planning Policy Commission. I think that it is difficult to, I understand the intent, and I'm concerned that what we have here will have unintended consequences and will also not meet the intent. My understanding is that a lot of times, if you have a business that has multiple locations, they might be more likely to take on a new location, that maybe there is more risk associated with, you know, how many customers there would be, et cetera, uncertainty around that. So they might be more willing to take on a new business. And I think, to me, it doesn't really make sense if we have a grocery store that has 11 locations or a grocery store that has nine locations. I mean, the fact is, we, there are certain kinds of businesses that are neighborhood-oriented that the community has told us time and again they do want, such as a grocery store for Old Town. And so I think incentivizing getting those sorts of businesses makes sense, but this approach continues to not make a lot of sense to me. And I'm also very worried to hear that there aren't other examples of it working in other cities. So I wonder if there's another approach that we might take to try to encourage these businesses that is more proven in other communities.
So two things. First of all, it, part of the definition says that grocery stores and medical dental services, no matter what the number of locations are, would be accepted as neighborhood-oriented businesses. So those would still be allowed.
Okay. Well, so the other example that was given in public comment, which I was thinking about too, was things like tasting rooms. I mean, there's a lot of really great examples of businesses in the Highlands that I think are really well-loved and would also be very, I think, well-liked by Old Town, but are also franchises. So I think that there's, I just don't know the cutoff at the certain number. For me, it doesn't, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And then my other concern is around the impervious surface. I received some more information about the impervious surface changes. This would allow up to, I believe, approximately five acres more of impervious surface in this area. And the area is, so there are 25 acres of CBD and about 10 acres of multifamily, of MFH. And so this would allow an additional five acres in those zones to be paved, if everybody took this incentive or was building out to the full amount of impervious surface that they could under the proposed change. And to say that we don't really have, we haven't yet done the stormwater master plan, that's concerning. To say that we will look at landscaping, how to address this with landscaping as part of Title 18, but we haven't done that yet, is also concerning. So that doesn't seem at all fully baked. And I would also be concerned around flooding, because this is an area of town that we just saw very recently be flooding. So I would want to understand the implications. And that doesn't, that's the other part that doesn't seem fully baked. But I also understand that many of our commissions have looked at this, and then the other ones around, especially around allowing more, you know, retail on the ground floor, and those do seem to align with what I've heard from the community.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you very much. I share former councilmember Kapler's concern around what might be called the unintended consequences of lowering height in the district, particularly around the city's ongoing conversations about how we best have municipal campus or something like it. Want to make sure that while I understand the interests of folks in the community, not to have some of the sort of big-box housing that has occurred in other parts of the valley, that again, we look at these potential unintended consequences. The other thing I would say about building height is I continue to feel like multi-use, where there's retail on the ground floor, feels substantially different from, as I said, these big-box apartment complexes. And so I would love to see something that acknowledges the difference between sort of a, dare I say, more sterile housing setup, and then something that is pedestrian-oriented that would help build critical mass for retail in Old Town. Thanks.
Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. The first thing that comes to mind, I just don't have enough of a knowledge base here. I would like more information about affordable housing allowances in the Old Town area, especially how that intersects with height, before I can make a decision about this at a regular council meeting. I think the ground-floor commercial lines up actually really nicely with the need and the vision for a potential creative district designation for this area too, so I'm excited about that. I want to, I share concerns that have been brought up about unintended consequences regarding height for a potential city hall facility in the future, although I see that as long-term, so could be something that we revisit in the future, potentially. I, I'm also concerned with 10 or fewer locations requirement for the neighborhood-oriented businesses. I would just like to hear a little bit more intent behind that, and maybe there's some, I don't know if there's community engagement that can go on. I don't know if there's community engagement that can go on around that in the timeframe that we have, but I'm just not hearing that very much. So I share council president Hunt's concern there. And then I finally just wanted to mention too that with regard to the height limits, I'm comfortable with it for now, especially because we have a plan for how we're growing per the Central Issaquah Plan for the future of Issaquah. But I think just kind of grasping and understanding that these areas aren't meant to sustain our growth right now, but they certainly could be in the future after Central Issaquah Plan has been built out. So just operating with that knowledge at the forefront of our head, I think is important as we move forward as well. So those are my thoughts right now.
May I address two?
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Okay. So the affordable housing. There's no requirement for affordable housing here. If someone builds affordable housing, we have many, many benefits. You get fee waivers for building review, plan review. You don't have to pay impact fees, you don't pay mitigation fees if you do affordable housing. There is no attachment to if you build higher than you're required to build, there's no inclusionary zoning here. So you're not required to build a zoning, affordable housing in this area. So it really does not touch affordable housing in any way, shape, or form. We'd like to encourage affordable housing through accessory dwelling units here and that kind of thing. This is, we'd love it, we'd love to have it here. So there's no way that we would be taking that away from this area. The other one, I think I've heard it mentioned twice, is the 10 or fewer, the neighborhood-oriented businesses and the 10 or fewer locations around the US. It's not a requirement that you have it. It's that if you come in and you happen to have 10 or fewer locations throughout the US, then you would get that 10% parking incentive. And the idea is that it's harder for smaller businesses to develop and part of that is that, you know, a surface parking space can cost anywhere from $6,000 to $8,000. So to be able to reduce that for a startup business is an incentive for them to come here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt?
So I think, I think that was an interesting point that you just made because I think it would be useful maybe for me to hear from my fellow councilmembers on this. I would think that what we want, so the way I've always thought about it is that this neighborhood-oriented incentive is to try to get the certain kinds of businesses that the neighborhood is wanting, not, not so much to support businesses that are starting up and therefore have less than 10 locations. So it's more to get the neighborhood, to get the community members of the neighborhood the kinds of businesses that they are interested in getting, which I've heard a lot about. So that's, I think it's actually a different way of looking at it. If you wanted to support startup businesses that have few locations, then I think this does make more sense. But from the, from my, my big concern is that this doesn't necessarily, in my opinion, get us, what I was thinking was the goal, get us to the goal, which would be to have, you know, a grocery store and the kind of services that people in the neighborhood seem to want, like the smaller, you know, deli and those kind of neighborhood-serving restaurants and things like that.
Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I would agree with that. I'm concerned about this, the incentivizing, the neighborhood-oriented businesses. So is the only definition, definition is 10 or fewer?
It's 10 or fewer and they serve daily or weekly needs.
I'm sorry?
It's 10 or fewer and they serve daily and/or weekly needs.
Which is what?
Hardware store, grocery store, a pharmacy, a restaurant, something like that. Grocery stores and medical and dental offices would be allowed.
So I, so I agree.
Would be included in this.
Thanks. I agree with councilmember Hunt that I think that, I think we have, I'm concerned that we haven't quite figured out exactly how to address this. I, I know that we have needs for certain types of businesses, you know, grocery store in the area for one. But as soon as we start talking about incentivizing some type of growth, then I get concerned because I don't think our community is asking us to do what we can to help get growth. And I know that there's a difference between trying to get the kind of development we want and just incentivizing, incentivizing growth. But I just want to make sure that we've been very thoughtful about it and we're not going to get something that we aren't, I mean, I can think of a whole host of things that we would get under that definition where that's not what we were trying to do. So that is a concern. I also have concern about the increasing the impervious surface. When you showed that map of the, along Sunset Way of the areas that could take advantage of that, but in the same discussion, presentation, we hear about we're trying not to get additional density, I'm concerned that that's exactly what we're going to get. And I know there also have, there's been a lot of meetings on this, but unless I've missed one, is this our first since all those meetings? When did, when did we have this package before?
This is the first time that you've seen the code amendments.
Okay. That was mine. So I'm not, I'm not sure that I would be ready to adopt something on the 16th, just because I've seen this for the first time, I've heard for the public and I maybe have to hear comments from us, maybe staff wants to take it back and see if there are, what responses you have or how we might, how you might address some of the concerns.
Director Niven, would you like to speak?
I would for just a little bit. I'm going to try and be expeditious here, given it's getting late. So Keith Niven, Director of Development Services, and I want to put a different lens on the neighborhood business one. So that came directly out of the transition of Staples and Front Street Market into Dollar Tree and Lazy Boy. Nothing that there's wrong with those. But as we talked about, as we, as we put together the Old Town Vitality Task Force, part of the conversation revolved around, we have this part of our city where we have, it's walkable, we have a good balance of residential and neighborhood-serving commercial. And the concern was that as you get retailers that focus on a bigger service area than Old Town, then those businesses are not necessarily just oriented to supporting Old Town. And we only have so much space for those kind of businesses on Front Street and Sunset that that was the concern. And so we started, you know, you look at the journey, we started by saying, "Well, let's just ban franchises because, you know, Starbucks is going to hurt yummy yogurt's coffee stand." I mean, so you just start that, start there. And the conversation really went to, our community didn't feel comfortable banning anything. So it's like, okay, if you're not going to ban it, how do you try and encourage the kind of businesses that you want? And so what we put together was, and because in Washington State, we really can't give money out to businesses like you can in other states, the few things that we can do to actually incent the businesses we want are things like parking reductions. And so as this conversation went through a public process, where we landed was, and it included DIA and included the chamber, where we landed was trying to focus on offering something to businesses that were focused on supporting the Old Town neighborhood. And so this is the language that we came up with. So I don't know if that helps anybody at the table or not, but that's, that's where that came from.
Okay. Time check again. We had 45 minutes for this item. We've gone past that already. So just, just to let you know that. Any more comments or questions? Councilmember Goodman?
So I, I appreciate that history and, and I understand that. And that's my understanding of how we got to here. I'm, I'm just not comfortable that that's, that we've, that we've hit the right formula.
All right. So a couple of thoughts, well, you go ahead first, Wally.
I was going to try to do that too. Would you?
You, you go ahead.
Okay. Oh, councilmember Ray, deputy council president.
Oh, go ahead.
I have just three thoughts. One is I'm concerned about the Title 18 integration. We haven't talked at all about that. I don't quite honestly know where we are with that. So I don't know where this fits in, other than they're both land use and they're both big deals. And so I'd like to know how they integrate. That's my first thought. On the, on the really positive side of things, a couple of years ago, I walked down Front Street and I tried to envision a 65-foot building on Front Street and it horrified me. And so thank you for the changes there because I think that will help preserve the scale and quality of that, of that really gem of a treasure. And then finally, when we talk about economic development strategy, I'd like to see this be integrated into a citywide economic development strategy, not just a Old Town subplan economic development strategy. So I think we need to do this as part of a larger whole.
Councilmember Ray touched on the same questions, questions I had, which was, the public comment that we had was, how is this integrated into Title 18? And I have the same question. So if you, do you want to respond to that or?
So we've, we are planning to come to the full council at a study session on March 10th. So very soon, we'll be able to talk about Title 18, where we are and what trajectory we potentially have for that.
Councilmember Goodman?
Structurally, would this be an overlay? So we have Title 18, but then this is an overlay. So that might help a little bit with some questions that we have about Title 18 and how these integrate with each other.
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
So would we, but we're still considering adopting this separate from the other overlays that are going to be changed within the Title 18. So this is, seems like it's on a separate track.
So we'll talk about Title 18 for a while. So Title 18, right now, for the rest of you who aren't on ad hoc committee, the, kind of the trajectory on getting that work done is probably going to push us to this time next year. Just the amount of public input we want to get, the workshops we're planning, all of that is going to take us probably till about April of 2021. I think the concern and why we queued up these Old Town changes in advance of that, one is because of what council, deputy council president, gosh, that's the longest thing ever, Ray stated, which is, you know, right now, you could do a five-story building on Front Street. And I think if somebody came in tomorrow and built a five-story building on Front Street, the community would be shocked. And so I think part of it was trying to get to some of those maybe more dramatic things that are allowed in code today, but that just, we have been lucky not to have happen. And so I think that's why we, I think, tried to maybe push this ahead of the rest of Title 18. We can always change it again with Title 18, as councilmember Goodman said, you know, Old Town and the Highlands and Talis are, all are going to have like different overlays. And there will be some codes specific to Old Town, which we can always go back and tinker with as part of the Title 18 public outreach and go back.
Okay. All right. City administrator Buckwitz?
So our recommendation would be, as Director Niven just mentioned, that this continue to travel forward, recognizing the Title 18 will have impacts throughout and if we need to come back at some later point, that would be our recommendation to allow this to move forward. I heard really three areas that I think that would require additional discussion. One was the Action 15 regarding neighborhood-oriented commercial projects. If the council wanted to narrow that definition, I guess I heard basically to say either pick the businesses, types of businesses you wanted and not look at the 10%, 10 fewer locations. That, that seems to be a decision point for the council. If you think that grocery stores, medical dental services, if there's other uses, are the ones that you would want to grant this for, then I think that's easily, easily changed. So I think that's one point. The second point is the issue with impervious surface. My take on this is it's a policy decision for you. The reason that the impervious surface change is being proposed is I think in part to allow additional economic development in the area. That came from the discussions and the studies that led up to this. So that's a policy decision for you. If that is not something you're comfortable with and that the trade-off with the impervious surface percentages aren't worth that, then we would recommend you just leave them as they are. And then the issue of height, it sounds like there's, the concern is primarily around municipal facilities and I have to imagine there's an ability to either address that currently or something we could add to this.
So that's an easy one, I think. So what we're talking about is reducing the height in two zones, CBD and multifamily high. If we were to do a expansion of city offices in Old Town, we would rezone that property, CFF. And right now, through the changes that we made in the community facilities, facilities, sorry for the acronym earlier, it allows public buildings outside of Central Issaquah to be 65 feet. We got rid of the no higher than adjacent lowest-highing buildings because that was too restrictive. So right now, it would allow for a five-story city hall in Old Town under code as is.
So if that would address the councils, then, then I think we're back to the impervious surface and the Action 15. So if you'd like to either have additional discussion on that, right now, that would be great. We can otherwise bring this back on a regular agenda with some additional thoughts that you could then discuss at a full council meeting. And I don't think that the issues are so large that you couldn't address them at a full council meeting.
All right. What's the will of the council? Move ahead or? Councilmember Walsh?
I'm comfortable with moving ahead with the impervious surface, but I did hear others that were not. And I think the questions addressed on the neighborhood business, action number 15, did present some questions for me. So I think there may be a better way to go after that. And so I would be interested in hearing back from the administration, another, another direction on that before moving forward.
Okay.
I think our suggestion, what I'm hearing from the council is you're looking at specific types of businesses versus the 10, 10 locations or more, or less, rather. So we could, we could have further discussions with that, come with a proposal at the full council. I think that would be easy enough to discuss at the full council.
Okay. Councilmember Mars? Oh, did you, no comment? Okay. And are we all in agreement then? Councilmember Hunt?
I think it would be great to see an alternative to Action 15 having to do with the kinds of businesses that people in the community want to see. So I appreciate that as an option. I also wonder if it'd be possible to think about incentives other than reducing the number of parking spaces. Again, I'm just not sure that this incentive would get us what we want. So I wonder if there are other possibilities of how we might work with businesses to, to get the kinds of businesses that we want. And then as far as impervious surface, as I said earlier, I think at this point, I just don't see the reasons for it. And in fact, there, for the reasons given for not allowing the TDR-receiving sites included to not, not increase impervious surface as the density, so to have it be both ways makes no sense to me. So I think at this point, I'm just, I don't see the reasons for it. So I can go forward and, and make that argument again, but that's where I stand.
Great. Councilmember Goodman?
The only other thought I had is I know we've got some, I don't know what I want to call them, but we have had some plans for improvements to Sunset Way. And so I don't know if we've dusted off those, and they're not that old, they're four years old or something, if we've looked at those plans to see how any of the proposed changes here are affected by or affect those plans when we're talking about parking and reduced parking and any kinds of, and how, you know, Alan Flintoff talked about concepts for a corridor. And so that just raised questions about plans for that street that we had to me.
So we, we had the Public Works Engineering come and address that topic because the Planning Policy Commission had the same questions. And what it boiled down to was that nothing And what it boiled down to was that nothing, as far as Sunset goes, was fully vetted and decided, and there were too many options to determine how one would affect the other.
And I think all of the schematics we did for Sunset were contained within the existing right-of-way prism. So, and all of these changes are on private property.
All right. Does administration feel that you have clear direction?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All right. We're, we're completed with this. I had originally proposed taking a 10-minute break at this point, but it's up to the council if you want to plow ahead. But the next item has a lot of decisions for us to look at, so. Yes?
Five.
Five-minute break. All right. Here we go.
How are you? How good?[655.29]
Oh, I thought, I thought the com- I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood. I thought we were going to take public comment for everything first and then do all of our, which I wouldn't be in favor of, but anyway, maybe I'm.
Are we okay then? Okay, Councilmember Hall, do you want to weigh in?
That is what we're doing, right? So taking public comment first before the presentation so they don't have the presentation to inform their, their comments? Yeah, if they don't care, then it's fine, yeah.
I'm presuming that you've read it before, but I could be wrong, so. All right, I went C here, okay.
There's five people here, so maybe it's a matter of if they have a strong preference. I think we're just trying to be expeditious with everyone's time.
I'd like to hear the presentation and then I'm sure if there's any comments that we agree with.
So, Madam Chair, perhaps we could just go through the presentation. We won't stop at the seven points, we'll come back.
All right, that sounds good, here we go.
Change your plan, all right. I'm still Kristin Leeson, Senior Planner with Development Services. Hanging out with you. So now, we're still talking about Old Town, but we're going to talk about architectural standards. And specifically, we are going to talk about new potential architectural standards to apply to the single-family duplex zone. So this would include standards for any structure within that zoning district. The zone was picked because we went through the Old Town planning process and the standards process that we've been talking about. I'll get to it, but what I want to say is this is not something that we've done before. Typically, when, single-family homes, when the architecture is regulated in some way, shape, or form, it is typically done through an HOA, through Homeowners Association, and not through the city. So we're trying to be very, very sensitive to this. And what we would like to get from you is tonight, we want to know what design topics, if you agree with the topics that we're proposing to include so far, and are there any topics that we, that are not included that you would like to see? So I'm going to give a little background. You've got the background of the Old Town Plan a few minutes ago, maybe an hour ago, and I'm going to just build on that. So we have, in our Old Town Plan, a goal C that says, "Traditional building character, maintain the traditional building character of the Cultural and Business District and Sunset Neighborhoods while allowing these areas to grow and evolve," is the goal. And we have two policies. One says, "Update the Cultural and Business District Standards consistent with the existing scale and traditional Main Street mixed-use character." The other is, "Update the multifamily high development and architectural standards along East Sunset Way," again, to maintain the character. So with that, I mentioned that we adopted immediate actions. The first immediate action under there is to do new architectural standards and guidelines in the Cultural and Business District, multifamily high, and single-family duplex zones. So we have existing design standards. Our existing design standards cover what is shown here, which are the, as they're discussed, whoops. Well, the Cultural and Business District, the multifamily high, there it is. Multifamily high. And it also actually covers our multifamily medium district. And somehow, this was left out of the plan, so unless we are told to do otherwise, we are planning to also update the existing standards for the multifamily medium area because they already exist. This is what they look like, our current ones. They're a little outdated, lots of drawings in there. Things have changed, these were adopted in 2001, so they need to be refreshed a little bit. We also have a goal that says, "Preserve residential neighborhoods and adopt architectural standard and updated development standards consistent with the character and style of the existing residences." If we were to do this, then we would move forward and include the area that is kind of in the gold up there, which is, which is the single-family duplex zone. So real, real quickly, I just want to let you know who we've met with. So far, in August of 2019, we had a stakeholder luncheon. It included commercial property owners, residential property owners, residences, business owners. And we just wanted to gain a better understanding of what preserve the scale and character of the residential neighborhood means, because this was a little new to us, we wanted to find out. We also talked about the existing standards. And what we heard was that the existing standards for the CBD and multifamily areas were good. They addressed the right elements, they just need some refreshing, a little updating. The single-family, the concern was that the higher buildings that are being built, the higher residential properties being built, and the bulk that is there, the factors that are affecting the scale and character of the residential neighborhoods right now, they weren't crazy about that. They like diversity in architecture and style, but they want to maintain the Old Town's eclectic character. On January 11th, we held a, I'm going to show you this, we held a walking tour and workshop. And I got to tell you, it was cold, it was rainy, it was windy, it was ugly, but these lovely 40-plus people showed up and gave us some really good feedback on what they wanted to see. So we made a brief presentation, and we talked about various topics that Sam is going to go through in just a few minutes. We made a presentation, but then the groups broke up into smaller group, the people broke up into smaller tables, and had really good discussions, and kind of voted on, do we want to regulate these, do we want to encourage them, prohibit them, or do we just want to be silent because they're already covered somewhere else in the code? So Sam is going to go over this. We also had, we had the same conversation with the Planning Policy Commission and Development Commission on February 12th, and we got some feedback from them. It was a good discussion. Now I'm going to hand it over to Samantha or Sam Suter, who is our consultant, who has worked on this type of thing before, who has generously flown out from Denver to do this with us, and she's going to walk through the rest.
Great. Thank you, Kristin. Let me get situated. So at the highest level, what we want to hear from you tonight is, what topics do you want to include in the standards? This is a new process for the city. There are standards in other parts of the city, but they're led by HOAs. So this will be the first city-led architectural standards for a single-family area. So that's why we want to make sure that we're getting the scope piece right. Also, this is early in the process, so we want your input now before we draft the guidelines and bring something to you that is, you know, pretty far from what you're expecting. In terms of the topics that we talked to the community and the commissions about, these are the topics we discussed. What you see in black are the topics that we more or less got pretty clear guideline or guidance on. So that includes style, massing roof, we'll march through each of these, and I'll tell you what we've heard before, but I want to bring your attention to the topics that are in pink. Those are the handful of topics that we've received kind of conflicting guidance or not clear enough guidance. So those will be the few topics that I think getting your input tonight will be really valuable to receive. And I'll point these out as we go through. Also, as we march through the topics, at the end, there are the discussion prompts, but I also have them at the end of the presentation, and they're separated by these. So what do we have clear guidance on, what do we need more guidance? So hopefully, it'll be pretty, pretty easy for you guys to have a discussion about it. In terms of architectural style, we talked to the community about the range of architectural style in the houses. We went on the walking tour in the rain. The big takeaway is there's a wide range of style that we see in Old Town. Most of the houses were built in the mid-century period, so from the '40s up to about 1970, and that's the middle row there. But there are some houses that were built much earlier, and some that were built as of last year. So in terms of style, because we do see such a range, we heard pretty clearly that the community doesn't want to regulate style. So there are other standards and guidelines where they say, "You must build a Craftsman," or "You must build a northwestern, you know, other style." And they said, "No, for Old Town, that doesn't work." So tonight, we want to hear, do you agree with this approach, or do you want to regulate style? That's one of the key takeaways, which hopefully should be a pretty quick discussion, but if not, we will welcome your feedback. In terms of massing, again, you see a range of sizes of houses, from really narrow, short houses, you know, the first ones up there on the upper left, down to some larger buildings on the lower right. And some of these, the height especially, I think will be addressed with the content that Kristin presented earlier, with the zoning and the maximum height. But what we heard from the community was that regardless of the zoning, they want houses that are broken down. They want to prohibit what we were calling these big boxed buildings. They want to see something with a little more nuance, a little more human scale, and how we've talked about that is requiring some shifts in plane. So you can see that there's a portion of the building that's closer, you know, to the perspective, and some that's set back, and there are some changes in roofline and shape. So we heard pretty consistently that that was something the community wants to see in the standards. They want to prohibit those, what we call, big boxes, and just require some of these scaling techniques.
Councilmember Hall?
Does balconies qualify as a difference in the plane?
I would say yes. We haven't written them yet, so I think that will be, once we start writing, and we'll figure out where to exactly draw the line, but I think anything that has a recess or protrusion like that would count.
Okay, and then I guess, I mean, based on your, based on the conversation with the neighborhood, they would think, it's sort of to break up that visual.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
They're basically saying, hey, this is one big flat surface, we want to have some nuance and variety.
Oh, Councilmember Hall?
So to that point, things like ADUs or mother-in-laws wouldn't really fall into the same category because it's not that big, flat surface?
Correct.
Am I understanding, okay?
Yep. We have a whole topic about that later, too. In terms of roof types, we talked about how roof types are very reflective of the overall style, and we went through a series of precedent imagery where you have low-pitched roofs or high-pitched roofs, and split, and all sorts of different combinations. What we heard consistently, again, was that the community does not want to see flat roofs. They thought that this lended the building to a more modern style, and they thought that this was out of character with Old Town. So our question today for you is, that was a very clear piece of guidance that we heard from the community, so do you agree with that approach, or is there anything else you want us to consider in terms of roof as we start drafting these standards? Materials, I think is the first one where we start to hear some difference in how we want to address it. And this, the difference on this topic was mainly between what we heard from the community and what we heard from the commissioners. So the public said that they only care about what it looks like. They also care about how it, they want to make sure it's cost-effective and practical. They don't want us to create a very strict menu of materials that will result in increased construction costs, so that was their priority. When we talked to the commissioners, they thought, oh, you might want to explore this topic a bit more because there might be some materials that are inappropriate for Old Town. So today, we want to get your input on how far down that rabbit hole do you want to go in terms of regulating materials? And I have a few slides that show some imagery of Old Town, so these are pictures of houses in Old Town, and these were built with no regulations currently. So I guess the question is, how much of a problem do we think this will be versus how strict do we want to get with the regulation? Siding is, I think, the most common material in Old Town, whether it's horizontally oriented or vertically oriented. We also see a lot of houses with shingles. Some, can I see this? Some use it for a primary material, but then some use it just to accent certain floors or certain portions of the building to add some architectural interest. There are some buildings that use stone or brick, and typically, these are for architectural accents or features. So a lot of these images use it as a foundation, but some also use brick or stone for chimneys or columns or other details. So with commission, we spent a long time talking about log cabins and whether or not these should be allowed in Old Town. So there are three pictures of log cabins located around Tiger Mountain area. And then there are two pictures, this one over here, and then this one down here, which aren't, I wouldn't consider them log cabins, but they have natural wood. So it's interesting to look at these in that context to say whether or not we should allow or prohibit these, what we call, log cabin-style material. So we can discuss whether or not, if you're using natural wood, it needs to be in the form of a plank, or if you think it's something you don't want to go down that rabbit hole of regulating, then, you know, we can say that something like this is allowed and suitable for Old Town. Another material we talked about with the commissions is stucco, and whether or not that should be allowed in Old Town. We heard some, some on commission saying that they thought that this isn't within the existing character of Old Town, but these are two examples that are located in the Highlands, just as a point for you to consider. And then, as a project team, as we were debriefing the commissions, we were talking about metal. So the two pictures on the top, it's not located in Old Town, but it's located in Issaquah. So if a homeowner wanted to use this material on their house in Old Town, is that something you would want to regulate or not? If it's something you want to regulate, where do we want to draw the line? Is it just metal that's inappropriate? And if so, the pictures on the bottom are houses that use some portion of metal. So metal takes a lot of different forms and shapes, so that's just something to consider as you discuss whether or not to allow metal. So in summary for materials, again, we've heard some conflicting or some unclear feedback between what the community said and then what we heard from the commissions. So we want your input on whether you want to regulate materials in the new standards, and if you do, how specific do you want to be, where do you want to draw that line? Color was another topic that we didn't have very clear feedback on whether or not people want to regulate this. So the colors shown here are currently regulated in the existing standards for the central or the Cultural Business District and the multifamily. There are colors that are allowed for the facades of the building, for the roof, and then there are colors that are prohibited. So some people in the community said that they do not want to regulate color. They said, "Old Town, single-family, I didn't buy my house in an HOA because I don't want to live on a block of beige houses." That's a fair point. Other people said they want to have some sense of boundaries. They said that they don't want to live next to a multi-color house. So right now, in Old Town, this is a range of houses and colors that have existed without any sort of standards in place. There are some, you know, houses that are very close to white, some earth tones, some nice blues, and the nice Craftsman has a nice, you know, light green color. And then when we talked to the community, we looked at a series of precedent imagerys, images. So these aren't located in Issaquah, but we showed them to the community, and they said, you know, "I don't really care if somebody paints their door a bright color," or "If they paint their trim a bright color, that's kind of fun, and we don't want to regulate that." When we looked at this slide, you know, we had some reservations where they said, "If you paint your house this really bright fluorescent green, that might be a problem." But we didn't hear something overwhelming about that. So as we've been talking about as a project team, there are some tools that we can use to prohibit these really, really bright colors without overly regulating and creating a very clear, specific color palette. We did hear that something like this might be a little too much. So when we're talking about, you know, facade of a building, having this multi-color, you know, technicolor facade seemed to be too much for people. So again, that's on one end of the spectrum. The other end is having a really clear color palette, and it seems like most people are somewhere in the middle. So we're just trying to figure out, where do you guys want to draw the line? How comfortable do you feel in terms of regulating color? Windows, basically what we heard is, yes, the street-facing facade of houses should have windows, it should have a door. That was it. They don't want to regulate architectural detail, they don't want to have minimum standards or numbers, they said that gets too much. We just want to make sure that there are windows. And again, that was a pretty clear community comment that we heard. In terms of driveways and garages, again, this was a pretty consistent and clear topic. And what people said was, if there's an alley in the back of the house, they want the driveway and they want the garage to be oriented to the alley. So on this diagram, what's shown in pink is the garage, it's oriented to the alley. People want to prioritize the human experience on the street, but the cars in the back. But in Old Town, there are lots that don't have alley access, so we talked about, what do you want to do in those situations? And again, what we heard was, whatever you can do to ensure that the garage feels secondary to the human connection to the street was what we heard. So you can set the garage back, so when you're on the street level, you see the house, and then the garage is kind of tucked back. Or if it's in line with the building, then do something extra. You know, this scenario shows a little front porch that is closer to the street from the garage, and then discourage something like this, where the garage is closer to the street than the house. And again, that was a pretty clear feedback that we heard in terms of garages and driveways. And we want to know if you agree with this, or if you want additional regulations or no regulations for this topic. In terms of setback, this is one of the topics that we didn't get very clear feedback on. And right now, zoning requires a minimum setback, so the building needs to be set back from the street, a minimum of 10 feet. But you can see on this block, and I'd say this is probably more typical in Old Town, there's a wide range, you know, buildings that are pretty close to buildings that are set back, you know, about 45 feet. But there are some blocks, like this one, Alder between Third and Fifth, where there's a really clear, consistent setback. So most of the houses on this block are set back approximately 45 feet from the street. So we showed the public this analysis, and some people said, yeah, if you're building a house on a block and there's a really consistent setback, you should respond to that. You might not have to build it exactly in line with that, but, you know, maybe give or take five feet in either direction seems like a reasonable approach. Some other people in the meeting didn't say much about it, so we heard nothing. And then from the commissioners, some of them were a little unsure between having different guidance for different blocks. So that's one of those topics that we might need a little more direction from you tonight. In terms of front yards and front doors and porches, again, we heard that people want to have a strong pedestrian connection between the buildings and the street. They want to ensure that there's a walkway, they want to ensure that there's a front door facing the street, but that's about where they want to stop. I think there was one group that said, yes, every house should have a front porch, but I think in terms of the discussion in the meeting, they knew that that was a little extreme. But the consensus was, as long as you're using your front yard and it's oriented toward people, then that would be a good thing. In terms of fencing, no one wants to regulate the actual materials or style of the fence. You don't need to have a fence. That was something pretty clear that we heard. But then you can see this, you know, what we call, privacy fences, so fences over three feet, I think they can get up to six feet. Right now, per zoning, you can have those between your front door and the street, as long as they're set back within the same building setbacks. And we heard people say, no, you shouldn't, you shouldn't do that. So they want to have the privacy fences set back, so you see the face of the building, and you don't have that privacy fence between the building and the street. Then in terms of pervious surfaces, we talked about zoning and how zoning regulates impervious surface, and that with the requirements in the single-family, you can have a front yard that's completely paved over. And what we heard is that there should be some minimum amount of front yard that is dedicated to pervious surfaces and natural areas and landscaped areas. So in summary for front yards, we heard pretty clear feedback, and it was related to the front walkway, front door, prohibiting privacy fences between the building and the street, and then having some sense of natural area in your front yard. Now to additions and ADUs. So this wasn't a topic that we teed up, either for the community or for the commissioners, but in both times, it came up. It's a priority for the community, they see this as a great opportunity, and Kristin mentioned this too, this is a great opportunity to provide affordable housing, and to also let people age in place and renovate their houses, and make sure that their houses satisfy these needs. So it's a big deal, and I think it's a big opportunity to get right in these standards. So this image shows some ADUs currently in Old Town. A lot of them are above garages, like these examples. This example is an ADU that faces the alley. And then additions as well, we're kind of talking about them in the same way, because we think we have a similar set of topics and questions regarding these two topics. This shows a before footprint of a house, and then how the house kind of grew and expanded, and this is in Old Town. So for, for both of these, and I think this might be a little more geared toward addition, do you want to regulate additions in the standards? If so, how large of an addition do you want to regulate? Does it depend if it's visible from the street? And then both for additions and ADUs, do they need to be consistent with the existing style and character of the house? And then when does the existing structure need to come into compliance with the current I also want to clarify that the city went through an ADU process recently, and so this wouldn't change that, this is building on that. And this would be applied to the character and style. It wouldn't talk about zoning or permitting or anything like that. So now we have our three prompt slides. This first slide is the direction needed. And again, these are the four topics that we had unclear feedback on, and they include materials, front yard setbacks, colors, and addition, additions and ADUs. We also want direction, if you like, the approach we presented in terms of these six topics, where we heard pretty clear feedback, and those included architectural style, massing roof types, windows, garages, and driveways, and front yards and fences. And then our last prompt is, are we missing any other topics that you want us to address?
Thank you.
Yep.
Do we have any questions from councilmembers? I'll just go down, I'll just go down the road here. Councilmember Mark?
Thank you, two questions. First is, have communities moved away from, I know for a while, it was sort of all the rage to, you know, pick a half dozen or seven architectural types and say, if there's going to be a rebuild, it's got to be one of those seven. Craftsman was one of the popular ones. Has that, have communities just moved away from that concept?
So typically, when, when we see those, those are developer-led or HOA-led standards?
I was familiar with it, like in Palo Alto. I think Palo Alto very successfully did it, and I believe they did it through the entire city.
Interesting. So in my experience, for single-family residential, most cities don't want to go down that rabbit hole, but if there's some sort of developer-led or HOA-led, then it seems to be a little more more comfortable?
I think it was done specifically to get, make sure people just didn't put up gigantic McMansions everywhere, and just, you know, the big box, take, you know, put the 5,000-square-foot house on the, you know, 4,000-square-foot piece of property.
Yeah.
So. The second question is, I'm familiar, in Minnesota, when you talk about vegetation, what's really common there is specific exemptions for native plants, where there's no watering or basically high maintenance, you know. If you plant things that basically don't require a lot of care and attention and fertilizer and all that kind of stuff, you basically get exempted from a lot of the HOA rules and whatnot. Do we see that much in Western Washington, and is that something that we have considered as we look at Old Town?
Do you want me to? So I, I'm a landscape architect. So I'm a landscape architect, so I love that question. Right now, we're trying to figure out where do we want to draw the line for Old Town? There is some language in the code about drought-tolerant and native plants. But right now, it exempts single-family from following that code language. So we're trying to figure out where is it appropriate for Old Town to support that. I think at a minimum, what we've talked about is making sure no one's planting invasive plants. But in terms of having some sort of incentive for having some native or drought-tolerant, I'm not sure if we're going to go down that rabbit hole right now. Another kind of quick tangent is there's been discussion for this project of prioritizing standards upfront to say, you shall do these few things that are priorities and then revisiting the process in a year to see where can we add some extra language to support something that perhaps might get at what you're talking about. So short answer is, we're still trying to figure out whether or not we want to include that. But if you have thoughts or if you want that to be included, we would definitely welcome that discussion.
It was really more around whether that, like the earlier question, whether it represented sort of the trend that places are going. I know in the Twin Cities, people love their Kentucky bluegrass and all the maintenance that it affords. And, you know, so there's a gigantic environmental argument. And I just didn't know if this is something that is on the rise or continues to be on the rise here, or maybe not so much.
From what I've seen, I haven't seen it being on the rise. I've seen it more as the exception when communities want to go above and beyond. But I think more and more, and we were talking about this earlier, as climate change becomes something that's more at the forefront, I think it might be more common in the future. And this could be a great case study of Issaquah and Old Town leading the way.
Thanks.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Do we have any limit on size? Or was that talked about? Did I miss that?
Size for the houses?
Yes.
So we have, zoning is the biggest blunt object to limit size. And we heard that the community, keep going, they want to prohibit something that's large and, you know, unarticulated. And they want to require something that's broken down. But we haven't.
Okay, I saw this. And I interpreted it a little bit different than just size restrictions. But that would be part of the massing question, you think?
I think what it would do, so I don't think we're going to necessarily change what zoning allows by entitlement. But we're, I think what I've heard, and we're still figuring out how do we want to articulate this. So that's why it's great to have your feedback now before we draft the standards. But I think we're going to say if it's wider than certain, you know, 40 feet or something, I just threw that out, then you have to have some sort of, you know, change in your facade. But I don't think we're going to say that if it's wider, it can't be wider than 40 feet. I think that might be a little too far, just from my initial read.
Well, I was thinking about the McMansion issue. So, you know, can you build a house that's 6,000 square feet, for example? That really was my question because you asked whether there were topics that we thought maybe should be addressed. And so mine was, oh, that's a little bit different than massing. So that's why I was just asking if there was a.
Got it. So more the, like the floor plate of the house?
Yes. And I'm just, it's just a question right now. Thanks.
And some of what we talked about regarding the building heights would help with that, yes. And then of course, you have the impervious surface as well.
Councilmember Hunt, did you still want to weigh in?
I have a few questions. One is, I wondered if the sustainability department and building materials, if there had been a conversation there around the green buildings and, you know, people wanting to do solar panels and all of those sort of programs that we have.
Funny, you should ask. We did have a conversation, actually, I guess just yesterday. And there, we are having conversations with them. And also, the Planning Policy Commission brought up solar and how that would work. I don't know where we're going to go with that right now.
Okay, well, I guess I would just be interested, when we're talking about materials, I think that could be a consideration. Not to be prohibitive against materials, but, you know, to encourage or to make sure that we're encouraging best practices for materials and also making sure that we allow sustainable building materials. And then I saw, and also on materials, I saw in some of the comments that there was questions about in the Highlands Particle Board. And I wondered if there are lessons to be learned there or what the administration thought about that.
Do you want to take that?
Okay. In the Highlands?
There's Particle Board in the Highlands.
Yeah, Particle Board in the Highlands and concerns about the, I think about the longevity of that as a building material and what we've learned from some of the buildings in the Highlands.
Right. And so what we're looking for here is we made sure when we talked to the public that, or when we had our meetings, that we don't want anything to be expensive, but we also want it to be durable. We want people to be able to stay in their homes for a long time. And if Particle Board is not something that's going to last more than two or three years, then that may be something that we want to consider prohibiting from Old Town.
So is that in the current, but that's not in the current recommendation?
It's not. Materials is a discussion that we need to have with you all because we haven't had clear direction anywhere.
Okay. Okay. And then the last one is on the flat roofs. And it's about, it sounds like people didn't think that the flat roofs looked like they were in character from the groups that were discussing this. But I wondered about, I wondered about green roofs because green roofs have to be flat. And if there is maybe some interest in certain kinds of flat roofs, if they would be allowed. And also, I was thinking, maybe it's a size issue. So that was another question, if there were any sort of discussion around why and maybe if it's really just that it's flat or if it's more of a massing, you know, kind of question.
So green roofs came up in my discussion with sustainability yesterday. And it was, no, we had not touched on it yet. In fact, I hadn't considered it, perhaps Sam had. And their initial thought was as long as it's still allowed in the commercial areas where that's, I think, more typically done. Yes, but that it was definitely worth having a discussion. I told her to remind me too. That it's definitely worth having a discussion when we go through the standards, that perhaps there are exceptions to that. I don't know how it would work. Like Sam said, we haven't written it, but we will be talking about it.
Yeah. And just to piggyback on that, some of the discussion I heard was that there is a priority to have standards that are sustainable and environmentally friendly. So I think that would be a really great topic to bring back or to have a discussion about. Because, I mean, it was overwhelming that people did not want to have flat roofs. But we didn't say what that meant in terms of the green roof implication. So I think that there would definitely be some people that would probably be pretty receptive to having that in as an exception.
Councilmember Martin.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you. I just had a quick question. Can't remember where else you said this, but you said the word discourage a couple times. I was wondering what the community conversation was like around this. In particular, if they're driveways and garages. So we had a comment about discouraging the garage in the front of the house and encouraging pedestrian-friendly atmospheres or whatever. Would discourage mean require against? Or was there something else in the community's mind about that?
So when we went to the community, we were still trying to figure out if we're going to have just standards where they're very cut and dry, you know, shallow statements, you must do this, or if we're going to have guidelines. So we wanted their input in terms of how strict do they want to be? And I think in terms of the driveway specifically, the reason why I said discourage is because there are some lots where that's all you can do. They're next to the creek, and so there's, you know, some situations. So I think we just need to be really clear that it's not going to say in no scenario can you do this because there are some that we just have to allow it for parking requirements. But I think for most houses, it would say, no, you're not allowed. If there's another plausible solution, you must do something else.
All right. Are there any further questions from council? All right. We'll take public comment at this time. Is there anybody who would like to comment on this agenda item? Steve? All right, good.
Again, Alan Flintoff, 580 cents away. Flat roofs, I've heard that a lot. I was up in B.C. and stayed up there with my kids. And there was this beautiful condo complex. And part of the roof was flat. And because they're postage stamp lots, that they could have their barbecue out there, chase lounges. The neighbors could kind of engage in that level. Super cool. I think what we're trying to avoid is ugly. Big boxes like on, what is it? Is it Andrews Street and Fifth? That are these big three-story white boxes. I think that's what keeps ugly out and keep the outliers out. But, you know. Unproductive, okay.
All right, go ahead.
Steve Balliger, 1-872-4-SOUTHEAST-65TH-PLECE. I just want to continue with that conversation. I think we can do a lot with flat roofs. I think eliminating flat roofs would be a mistake. I think it's really important for green roofs. And you can get a great sort of difference in height. And you can vary things. And it can also serve as a good space for gathering. So I just, I think we're going down the wrong rabbit hole on that one.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, all right. So we, as you saw during the presentation, we have questions for each of the areas. So I'll go back. Do you want to lead us to those? And then I'll lead the discussion. Okay?
Yes. So the topics on this slide are probably the most discussion that we'd need. Maybe we add roofs back to the slide, given public comments. But the first one, I'd say, we can start with materials. And do you want to regulate materials? So require or prohibit certain materials? And if yes, then, you know, how specific do you want to be? And what materials do you want to require or prohibit?
Okay, Councilmember Walsh.
Can I maybe change the starting point for this conversation rather than diving into each of these? Because my general feedback is if the Old Town neighborhood wants an HOA, they should develop an HOA. And we haven't had regulation in this area thus far and haven't received too many things that are out of the scope. I don't see a rainbow house in the area. And so my general thought is that maybe we don't need to go down this direction. But I'm interested in hearing what other people have to say.
Councilmember Hall.
I guess this actually would be a question for administration. But do we know if historically they've ever had an HOA? If there have ever been talks or interest for an HOA? Because if they're not interested, then I see a need here. But if they are, then maybe not.
So the discussion of HOA has never come up. They moved there because there wasn't an HOA. However, a lot of them did. However, when we did the Old Town Plan Update, part of what we included in our survey and in our four public meetings or four open houses was what about these houses and commercial buildings? Do you like and not like? And people were pretty clear on what they wanted and didn't want or liked and didn't like. So that is where the idea of having architectural standards for single-family came up. And, you know, we had 470 people respond to the survey. So it's not like it was a small, you know, it wasn't like it was 10 or 20 that we got. And we heard from a pretty large group of people.
And the, sorry, can I?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
When we were getting survey responses, no one was like, why the heck is the city asking me about this? Where's their place here? Okay, good.
I think Councilmember Goodman was first, and then Councilmember Walsh.
So the Old Town Plan says to maintain the traditional character and scale. And so I think that exercise is to determine how we do that. And I would agree with, I mean, certainly if the folks there wanted to have their own HOA, they could start one. I doubt that's going to happen. But in terms of my feedback, for materials, I would think we'd want to. My general feedback is I want to regulate as little as possible because I think the beauty of the neighborhood is the eclectic nature of it. And sure, we can think of all sorts of outliers that potentially could happen. Although I doubt that we're going to get a run of interesting log cabins and rainbow houses. Although we could add that to our visit Issaquah itinerary if we did get those. So in terms of materials, I think there are some problematic materials that we could, that we might want to think about prohibiting, not just in Old Town, but maybe everywhere. And I think there are some lessons to be learned in Issaquah Highlands and elsewhere, not just Issaquah Highlands. But I would want it to be narrow. I'm not really interested in prohibiting all sorts of different types of materials. First of all, trends change and costs change. And the more prescriptive you are, the more expensive it is. And that runs counter to what we're trying to do in our community, which is to make it to the degree that it makes sense to make things less affordable rather than more expensive. So front yard setbacks, no, I like the differing setbacks. I want people to be able to use their property the way they want to use it. And they can always move to a place that's more prescriptive if they want to. Colors, I think if we want to allow, if we want to prohibit some crazy stuff, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I don't, if we want to prohibit neon and sparkles and whatever else was, you know. But again, I think it should be, it should be narrow. Additions and ADUs, I don't really have a comment on the first two. The third one, when should existing structures have to come into compliance? I think that should be the same in the entire city. I don't think it should be anything special here. I am not in favor of prohibiting flat roofs. And I think that if we want to be able to preserve the ability for green roofs and other things, then I think then the code just is silent. Because if it's not prohibited or if it's not mentioned, then you can do it. Let's see. And the only other topic was that might be missing is what I said before. And that's sort of the companion to massing, and that is the size. And do we want to somehow address the size? So you could buy two lots and build a giant house. Is that what we want? I think the neighborhood would probably say no, but that's my guess. So. And the other comment I want to make is that I really liked your presentation. And I really, really appreciated how you guys presented this as a, and I'm going to speak out of turn because there are two colleagues here who are with me on Title 18 ad hoc. But I really, really like how this was presented in terms of kind of briefly, a little bit of background and what you've heard. And in general, this is kind of the direction you're heading. And how do you, what do you think about that? That's, I just really appreciated that. And I thought it was a good way to present it to us. Thanks.
Councilmember Martin.
Absolutely agree that the eclectic nature of Old Town is important. I say also, go very, very light if we're going to put any kind of restrictions on. You know, there's all sorts of communities around here where if you want to have lots of regulations on your house color, you can go for it. My first house was in Kohani, and it was a yellow house. And a neighbor came by and they said, you know, it's just, it's a little weird for us. You know, there was some animosity left over because, you know, the previous people that owned this house, they got an exemption or variance or whatever to make the house yellow. And I'm like. And I'm like, I bought the house. It was yellow when I got here. But so, you know, now I live on Squawk and I have like, I have stone flooring in my dining room and just, you know, all sorts of crazy stuff and neighbors that have log cabins. And, you know, I like the thing about smaller shapes on the massing and not having just a big square. I think we're all sort of getting at the idea of when people put, you know, high, I mean, almost like you almost want to restrict the FAR on, the equivalent of FAR on residential property and not have people just max out the space. You know, I even like the metal. I'm from the Twin Cities where we have a couple of Frank Gehry designs. I love metal. Yeah, I do think the examples of the rainbow-colored houses are not my taste. But I really, I just want to repeat, I love that Old Town has a variety of sizes of houses and types of houses and going back to the '20s. And I would not want to see us do any sort of heavy-handed action there. Thanks.
Councilmember Goodman.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Hart.
So I appreciate all of my fellow councilmember comments, and I agree with a lot of it. And I think for me, it's also amazing that so many people attended these workshops and gave you feedback in the surveys. And it's really encouraging that, I think there's, like, reading their comments, there's a real sense of pride in having this diversity of housing. And I think that we definitely don't want to do anything to mess that up. So I would say, yeah, very light touch. And I think the one thing that does seem clear is this massing issue, which I think could also probably play into just sheer size. But definitely, especially if we have sort of minor changes that allow you to visually break up the space, like balconies, which I think would make a big difference. I think having that in regulation would be addressing some of the concerns. And also, it's a pretty light touch, I think. So I also appreciate seeing all the pictures because it makes it much more easy to understand what you're talking about rather than just jargon. So I thought that was really great. And again, I think it sounds like you got a lot of really great feedback from the public. And the last thing on the roofs, it seems to me like it's not just that flat roofs are not wanted. And I think, as was mentioned in the public comments, there's also, there's green roofs, but there's other ways you could use the roof to make it more sort of a useful space. And that could also break up the space visually. And that would probably also meet the intent of what people were trying to get at. So that's the one area where I think it might have, might need some changes. And then also the materials, if we could learn from what materials haven't worked as well. Not so much, I'm not so much concerned about the aesthetics of materials, but more about the actual durability and longevity. Then I think we should try to encourage the materials that are best practice.
Anyone else? Oh, right there. Councilmember Walsh.
Thanks. So Kristin, I definitely remember there was a survey about architectural design that related to Sunset and the multifamily high and all of that. And that was how we got those architectural design standards? Was there a separate one about Old Town, single-family?
There, it was included in the survey. And it was also discussed at the open houses. Yes.
Okay.
That was my table.
Okay. My general thought is we did the architectural and urban design standards for those areas that are a little bit more central in the city and that more of the public has. I'm not really in favor of going in and adding design standards, requirements, shells into code for Old Town or other neighborhoods that didn't come up with an HOA or don't want to develop an HOA. I'm also just concerned about regulations, whether it's materials or you have to have articulation on your housing. All of those things cost more money. And they not only cost more money to develop the houses, which hurts housing affordability, but they also cost money for the city to have to review those. And it just takes time away from other things. So generally, I would say no to all of the things that were listed. If we had to do colors and prohibit certain colors and lots of colors, I think most everybody can get behind that. And that could be a fairly quick review at the city level and wouldn't cost someone necessarily more money on the housing side. But some of the other things, yeah, no.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Hall.
I think what we're saying is if we have a new city hall, we don't want it to be lime green. I won't repeat what's being said. I would also like a light touch I want to agree with. I actually really liked how Councilmember Goodman phrased what the REES category. And I agree with all that. And I would even say that I'm not really super interested in prohibiting massing either personally, unless I hear more of the reasoning behind that. I see it as a benefit to housing affordability. So that's where my head's at.
Anyone else? Good, my turn. Have a crazy question about the ADUs. If someone wanted to put a tiny house in their backyard, is this covered? Or would that not be allowed? Or is that considered an ADU or not an ADU?
Tiny houses are currently not, Keith is nodding his head. They have to be hooked up to sewer and water. So you can't just plop a tiny house in your backyard. That is not allowed.
Okay.
So I think that answers.
Yeah, that does answer. So an ADU is definitely an attached.
No, it's not attached. It can be, yeah. We showed an example of one there that is a separate house that's in the back, but it is connected. It's the one in the top-left corner. It's not a garage. It is actually a separate, smaller house that is detached in the back. But it is connected-
The code limits it to 1,000 square feet. An ADU needs to be 1,000 square feet or less. So if you had a prefab unit that you want to put in your backyard, you could do that so long as you met building setbacks and that it didn't exceed 1,000 square feet. As Kristin said, it needs to be hooked to water and sewer. But you could do that in your backyard. Now, the question that was spooled up here is would it need to meet the architecture of the house?
Right.
Or not? Do we care, one way or the other? And that was one of the things we were posing to you guys. Because we are supportive of ADUs. And prefab is definitely one choice that people could do in terms of that. So.
So, sorry at this late hour to bring that up. But I would, I really want to encourage affordable housing and ADUs. And if that included that, I would say, you know, my preference would be that they, if you brought in something like that, that it would meet these standards. It would blend in with the community and be a part of the community. But I would like to be sure that that option is available. I don't want to repeat what everybody said. I just, the rainbow color houses was at the table that I was at. At the open house was, they wanted, it was a group that really wanted the neighborhood to be eclectic. But when it came to the rainbow houses, it was, that's where we draw the line. So somehow or another, we need to write language that would prohibit that. But then, at the same time, they like the little bits of color, like a door, something like that. But somehow or another, we need the language on the rainbow houses. So commend you also for the public outreach. I did attend the walk-around and I loved it. It was a great event and a really good way to hear what the community wanted. And so I commend you for that as well. So I think that's the totality of my comments because others have been, have said, and I agree with what they've said. So. Any more comments? Wally, you want to add something?
I was just going to say, would it be helpful for Sam to walk through these and kind of repeat back what she's heard? If there's no additional comments, just to make sure we've got it straight.
Okay. No? Okay, fine. I'm hearing a no here.
We'll take that. We have the tape. If we need to go back and look at it. Kristin, what would be the next steps? There you go.
So I, right now, this is all tentative. It is, we are scheduled to review the first draft. Well, it would be public on the website for people to view and, you know, in our offices for people to view on June 4th. The following week, we would discuss it at the Planning Policy. It would be a joint Planning Policy Commission and Development Commission meeting. Again, we keep, I think, we like having meetings with those two because one has to kind of come up with and, you know, make recommendations on these policies and regulations. The other one actually enforces it. So it's good to have those two talking at the same time. So we do that. On July 19th, we're proposed to do the PPC public hearing. And then sometime in the summer, we would have our council study session. The plan right now is that the final draft would be incorporated into Title 18 when that happens.
Okay. Very good. Do we have any good of the order? Councilmember Mart.
I have one quick one. I know the hour is late. Hank Markson recently retired from the Redmond City Council and has been a real friend to Issaquah over the years and mentored really three generations of politicians in the city and got them involved and off on the right foot regionally. And unfortunately today, his wife of 35 years, Patty, lost her fight with cancer after a couple years of fighting very, very hard. So I just wanted to take a moment for all the folks that Hank has touched here in Issaquah through his regional leadership, just to reach out and say, we're thinking of him during his time of loss and sorrow.
Thank you for that. Any other comments? We are adjourned.